Okay, we'll stop. We have a long agenda, so let's get to it. We have two decisions in the matter of case number 2833, Leon and Gerard Abrams, 107 Wickapog Road.
I move we accept this decision as proposed.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And in the matter of 2837 Southampton Town Newspapers Incorporated, 135 Windmill Lane.
I move we accept this decision as proposed.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anybody here on Abrams that wants a copy of the decision?
That takes us down to the pending cases, the first one being--
Kevin, before you go on to the pending cases, we had that lead agency request from the planning board that we shot at the work session. So let's do a motion on that.
In regard to which application?
Resolved that the zoning board hereby consents that the planning board be lead agency under SEQA with respect to the application of Nine Main Street Associates LLC.
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Takes care of that, right?
Mm-hmm.
Now, the pending cases, 2757 is the Wickapog Pond Rehab Project. Do we have someone here for that? Chick, do we have anything new on that?
No, I met with the consultant for the applicant probably before the last month's meeting. I know he's working on some material to submit to the board. I have not heard anything yet.
What's your suggestion that we should do? Just adjourn her for all purposes?
I would say so, given the opportunity. I can certainly call him before the next meeting and find out the status.
Okay.
I move we adjourn that case for all purposes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Victoria Fraser, 10 Leo's Lane, case number 2834.
Good evening, gentlemen. I note that you have a very long agenda, so I'd like to briefly take you through the packets that you received probably a couple weeks ago. The first page in the packet is a current survey. A couple things to note. Given the fact that it is on the side of a circular cul-de-sac, you'll see that the building envelope is extremely abnormal. That is noted by the dotted lines that you'll see. And you can see on one side, there's a concave shape, and this is obviously due to the circular formation of the cul-de-sac. It is highly unusual. The current house is obviously non-conforming, both on the north side and the south side. It is not within the setbacks, given the fact that it was pre-existing. One thing to note, which you do not have a diagram of, but this house is in the Roscoe Development. There are two other cul-de-sacs in that Roscoe Development, and neither one of them is circular. They are both straight. So they come to a dead end, and the line of the street is straight rather than circular. Another thing to note is that this does dead-end here, and you can see from the survey that there's a fence there, and behind it is the Terry Court residential area. So that's the first thing in your packet. The next four documents are there to show that there is precedent for relief in setbacks. You will see some information from the Bravers, which is the house-- it is the lot across the street. They requested a variance when they did their renovation several years ago. And there is also a copy of your decision showing that you granted them relief on their setback. In addition to that, I came before you approximately two years ago requesting a variance. At the time, we believed that we were going to do a small addition off the back. This is a one-story ranch house, and we were going to do a small addition off of the back. You all very generously, and there is a copy of the decision there, granted us relief on the setbacks for that addition. In the meantime, given what's happened, and my husband's constant pressing me, we decided instead to build a two-story residence. The last page in your packets shows the current plan for the two-story residence. I hope that you will see that the architect worked very hard to get almost the entire residence within that, what is the building envelope. And as I mentioned in the beginning, it's a very unusual building envelope. We are now proposing a small two-story residence, and the only thing that didn't work in the building envelope, and we went through many, many different scenarios, was the garage. So we are requesting a setback relief for the garage itself. I also just want to note that the setback, the current, as it is proposed right now, if you grant the variance, our setback will be 16.6 feet on that side, and we will no longer be extending out of the building envelope on the south side of the building. And currently, we are 10.2 to 3 feet. The setback for our existing house right now is 10.2 feet, so we've pulled back from the existing house.
Anything, Rick?
No.
No questions. She did provide the documents that we asked her to provide. Still a question of whether the relief is warranted or not, but, you know, we have all the information now.
Is there anyone out in the audience who'd like to hear to this application? You don't need anything else, right?
She gave us everything we asked for at the last meeting.
May I have a motion to hold this decision?
So moved. Second?
Thank you all very much.
On the application of 2835, 24 Polaski Street.
Good evening. The applicant, John Bennett. What I'm going to review with you, hopefully you were able to look at the work session. In response to comments received at the public hearing on October 23rd, we presented revised architectural plans and also a revised survey showing a reduced pool. I think in terms of the pyramid-- excuse me, yeah, the pyramid encroachment, at the request of one of the board members, we've taken the easterly setback a foot in. So although the potential is the permitted zoning setback, we shaved 11 feet from the easterly property line. Mr. Sherwood, the project architect, is with me this evening if there are any other questions. But that fortunately has reduced the proposed pyramid encroachment by 840 cubic feet. So the total proposed encroachment is now 3,537 feet, as opposed to 400, 377 cubic feet. It's surprising how much it adds up, but just by taking that one foot off. And you'll remember that there's a letter of no opposition from the neighbor to that side in any event. But I think the board was looking to see if we could tighten things up, and we're glad to be able to report that we did indeed do that. So we have Mr. Sherwood's plans. You have the revised survey showing the reduction in linear terms and terms of cubic terms, the pyramid law. So again, hopefully that meets to your satisfaction. Then also at the suggestion of the board, the dimensions of our proposed pool has been reduced. The pool is proposed to be located 18 feet from the eastern and western property lines, requiring 2 feet of relief, and 18.6 feet from the southerly line, requiring 1.4 feet of relief. You'll remember that, again, the neighbor to the east had the benefit of a pool variance to, I believe, 15 feet on one side that was granted by this board. I guess it was three or four years ago, I think. But hopefully with these modifications and the tightening up of the site as requested by the board, we've met the board's-- satisfactorily met the board's concerns. I don't think that I need to belabor it unless the board has additional questions.
Now, the pool is 10 by 30, right? Just under 30. 9.9.
29.9 by, I think it's 14.
14.3.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, 14.3. Dimension is shown on the interior.
The 10 relates to the distance from the house.
Yes, 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 yes.
About 14 by 30. And you reduce the cubic feet of the pyramid law by--
840 cubic feet. It's surprising how much, you know, you take a foot off, but it really reduces--
And you are entitled to some--
We're only about 403 cubic feet beyond what would be permitted as a right. So it's really not very greedy at all. I think you have a-- what you end up with is a much better development for the property.
Do we have anything from the board?
No.
Rick? Anything from the audience on this application? Yes.
My name is Connie Cornish. I'm a neighbor of the property. I would simply say that it seems surprising to me that there's consideration for too much expansion, given that these people have no intention of being a part of the neighborhood. And the neighbor that's giving consideration, that has the pool, that was given the exemption, those people were never really given the exemption deliberately. It was because the pool was put in the wrong place, and they pleaded poverty. So these exceptions that are being used as precedent seem perhaps not valid. The board never genuinely gave their approval to put the pool there. It was put there in error, and then three years later, they were given the approval. So I would just caution that these mistakes and errors that keep happening, that get approved over time, become precedent, and they weren't ever your intention at the time. And that's all, I would say, as a neighbor. I would caution us to let too much slip through.
And what is the criteria for becoming part of the neighborhood?
Well, these people have said their intention is to buy it and sell it to another family. They're not planning on living there.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak to this application? Yeah, well, can we hold this one over for decision?
So moved.
All in favor? On the application of St. Andrews Dune Church, case number 2836.
Hello, Jim Walker from Enter Science. Tony Tohill is here with me, and Steve Lemansky is also here. Since last month, we submitted a lot of documents, and I believe you all should have packages. I sent them by email to Mr. Voorhees, and I also sent a paper copy to him. Hopefully he has everything. The documents that we sent are simply a reiteration of the documents that we did in 2002. They're not intended to be the precise answer to everything the board needs to do for this project, but hopefully they'll help the board get through the basics. So I'm going to cover them real quickly. There was an October 2014 letter from Henry Boconewitz, the coastal expert. I provided an updated construction methodology. This is a methodology that was worked out with Dave Emelida during the last time that we went through this process. And I typed up updates to the St. Andrews Dune Church permit conditions. We provided a maintenance cost estimate. All these documents were updated. We provided St. Andrews coastal erosion hazard area special conditions. And I provided a performance bond. Performance bond is kind of standard protocol, but at the time, it was done for the project that was approved, and it's simply an update to that same document. In addition, we provided a draft of the environmental forms. And these are items that typically Mr. Voorhees would finish. But the last time through, I did them, and Dave Emelida finished them up, and the board adopted them. So I did them again, exact same way that we did them in 2002 and 2003. We provided a proposed haul road diagram. It's not very exciting. We run the project from Main Beach across the face of the Bathing Corporation, and there's minor amount of staging area at South Main Street at the end. We provide a revised site plan and cross-section details by Steve Lemansky. The main thing that you need to know there is there's 2,000 yards of material added for the dune to be restored over top the steel sheet piling after it's installed. We did that based on some comments from New York State DEC. And after consideration with Steve, that's the only real change that are on those plans. There is a Squires and Holden survey change. We added the coastal erosion hazard line. That's the only change. And in my cover letter to Chick and to Kevin Geidera, we went through the 11 items that Nelson Pope and Voorhees identified. Basically mobilization, access, staging areas, stockpile areas, how to install the bulkhead, protection of adjacent properties, hours of operation. These are standard things that we talked about with the board the last time through. All those items are in front of you. I can answer any questions that you may have, or Tony Tohill can ask any legal-- answer any legal questions, or Steve can answer any engineering questions. I think that's all we have.
You know, I'm reading through the methodology, and I understand the bulkhead and understand driving it. I don't understand quite the preparation, because it seems like you have to excavate before you drive the steel pilings, but you also have to excavate behind where you're driving the steel piling, I guess for tiebacks. Is that pretty-- is that what happens?
That's called the drag--
How big a hole are you digging here?
It's called a drag pile.
Drag pile, yeah.
You dig the line where the steel sheet piling goes down. And you don't dig it all the way down. You dig it to a certain depth, and the equipment pushes the steel sheet piling into place. You finish the job in that area. Then you install the backing system, and you put tie rods in. So basically, you're going to have--
That doesn't go from the wall backwards. It just goes horizontally. It's like a strongback?
You're going to have one excavation from the return at the Berish property to the return at the Bathing Court. You're even going to have another excavation right where the drag piles go. And then you're going to have minor excavations where the tie rods are going to be installed.
How far back is that drag pile? 16 feet?
16 feet.
So you're going to dig a trench for the steel, and then you're going to dig another trench 16 further back for the--
Yes.
Okay, and then how far apart are these-- do you tie the drag piles back to this--
I believe they're five feet. They might be six feet.
I think they're 10 feet.
10 feet, and then how deep are those?
Stephen, no.
How far-- I mean, it just seems like you're tearing a heck out of the dune to put this thing in.
The dune is going to be torn apart during the construction process, and it's going to be put back together afterwards, and more sand added. Basically, you're down about eight feet from the topmost part of the dune down to the top of the steel wall.
So you're going to excavate all that and then put it on the beachside?
Towards the Berish property. We identified that on the little-- Yeah, it's on there.
Oh, is this one?
The sand pile.
You put the sand here.
Not a haul road diagram.
Now, Dan, you don't take all the sand away.
No, I know that.
Take as little away as possible.
Right.
And that is a restored dune anyway. We restored that after Superstorm Sandy. The dune is doing fairly well. You disrupt the dune as little as you can, but there's basically no way to do the project without disruption. And then we have to put the--
How long from start to finish?
It's about six weeks' worth of work to drive that steel. And it's usually twice that to start to finish.
It's like a three-month project.
Realistically, that's about what it is.
This will be started sometime after Labor Day, right?
You have to build a little haul road over top the timber jetty's to protect them. We had to do that when we restored the dune.
And you're going to start this right after Labor Day?
Right after Labor Day.
Hurricane season.
We don't want to talk about hurricanes, do we?
No, I can just envision all the sand you're putting up there.
There's hurricane season, then we could talk about nor'easter season, colonial water bird closures, after Labor Day.
But this dune already has been restored once anyway, right?
The dune's definitely been restored more than once. We restored it immediately after, actually, April 1st, after Superstorm Sandy. We finished April 1st. I remember.
I remember some years ago, you were here with this project, and you were going to put boulders on the beach that were going to sink. What happened to that project?
We couldn't get the state and town approvals. We're back in front of you.
Was it bad science? I see they dropped boulders in Malibu, and they're still there. They haven't sunk an inch.
That's interesting. No, it's not bad science. The whole idea was we were going to build it in a different location, so it required a different technology. The idea of putting a sloping rock wall from face to face at the Berish and the Bathing Court bulkheads is a sound application that was studied extensively. And I remember that last month that you had a concern with scour. The reason why we're building something different, and we're building in a different location, is because we're connecting the back ends of the returns with a steel sheet piling that's well behind the beach. So we're not concerned with scour there or the need for sloping rock. In that location, the steel sheet piling should function well and be well away from the beach where we would be worried about scour. In addition to that, we've had some pretty serious storms between 2002 and 2003 and the current date. So it's a little more urgent to get it done.
And you're well aware of the beach as of today? I mean, well far from the beach as of today, but with rising waters, maybe not so far.
We're well behind the line of shoreline hardening. The line of shoreline hardening goes all the way from Little Plains to Crider's Beach. We're the hole. So there's a little more urgency than there was in 2002 and 2003 to resolve the problems. Chick, I assume you got everything?
I did.
Chick?
Yeah, as Jim said, there was quite a lot of information submitted. We prepared a memo after the last meeting, and it did mostly have to do with construction, just to ensure that that was thought out. Sounds like a lot of the knowledge that was gained during the last dune restoration is being applied here. So I don't have any questions, but I have to say I haven't reviewed all the material that was submitted. But it does look complete, and it does look responsive to our request. Dan, I think, did you have a question about the dead men in back that the tie rods were going to tie to?
Yeah.
And how far back they were?
Yeah, it's like 16 feet. Does that go down eight feet also?
It's a similar installation. The reason why the distance back is important is the amount of material that's between here and here helps the drag pile system hold the front wall. And it also functions a different way. It also straightens the wall. So it does two things. It provides strength to hold the wall under attack, and it also straightens the wall. That's the two basic things drag piles do.
So I have no further questions tonight. I don't know if it's best to leave it open in some way in case there are questions, but I'd like to review the material that's been submitted.
Rick, do you have anything?
We just got these packets Tuesday night, and you can see we have a volume of new cases that we got Tuesday night. So as with Chick, I haven't had an opportunity to look at these closely. I do have one question. I did take a peek at the-- I had asked you to submit what was done back in 2002, or whatever the year was, in relation to SEQA. And I took a quick look at that, and I couldn't tell from that whether we did a coordinated SEQA review as lead agency between us and the DEC or not. I couldn't tell from what you submitted.
I don't believe you did, Rick.
I know that Tony mentioned at the last meeting that the DEC is expecting us to do the SEQA review. Does that mean-- is Tony here?
Yes, they need an egg deck to proceed to the next step.
Great. Do we have anything from them indicating that they would like us to be lead agency?
No, I can talk to Laura Scalazo, though.
That's pretty standard operating procedure for them.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just looking for the piece of paper.
They're going to take the position that it's a type 2 under not 6 NYCRR 617, but instead, under their version of SEQA, which is 6 NYCRR Part 618.
Okay. Their position is that they're type 2?
It's type 2 under 618, which is their internal version.
Okay, then if they're type 2, if it's type 2 for them, we don't need to coordinate.
Well, but they still need you to do it.
Well, they still need us to do it, but we don't need a--
No, you don't need to coordinate.
Coordination letter?
No.
Okay. If you could just submit something in writing so we don't-- Tony, just pointing out that citing the SEQA section that you're talking about under their regs, that this is type 2. And then with that, we're automatically the lead agency. So the first thing we have to do before we can act on the merits of the application is we need to make sure that we have everything we need in order to do the SEQA analysis. So I think we need to give Chick more time to review the materials, and if he needs any other information to get it. But we need his input on that before we, you know, we can't really close the record at this point.
Okay, so we'll leave it open. If you're anyone out in the audience who'd like to hear to this application. Therefore, can I have a motion to adjourn this for all purposes?
You may so move.
On the first application under new cases, 2838 George Carmer, 97 Moses Lane. On the first application under new cases, 2838 George Palmer, 97 Moses Lane.
Hi, John Tarbet, Tarbet Lester. We have an office in Amagansett. I'm here with Amada Ortiz, excuse me, the architect for the project. So this is, I imagine a lot of the board members are maybe familiar with the house or at least the street and maybe have gone by there as well. It's a very old home. It's sort of unique in that way. It's a...
Way back from the street.
Way back from the street. It's 160 feet from the street, which, you know, not all the lots are narrow on Moses Lane, but a few of them are, and this is one of the real narrow lots. The house is set back real far. We're here for two different projects. First, I'd like to just deal with the first one, which is an addition to the house. The addition to the house complies with all zoning. The reason why we're here is because in 1999, the current owner came to you for a side yard variance to do an addition. As a condition of that approval, this board said before any other work was done to the house, they would have to come back to this board. It's not really a variance because the addition we want to do complies with zoning. But nevertheless, there was a condition from 1999 which required us to come back. It's a modest home with the addition. It'll still only be 2,500 square feet, well below, I think it's about a 4,000 square foot GFA allowance on the property. Again, unique, this owner likes the house. He likes a small house. He likes the historic nature of the home. He wants to keep it. Now, that's the first issue, which again doesn't...
Heading on to the south side of the house.
South side of the house, correct, yeah. Well, you know, right in the middle of the building envelope.
Right.
And it's a modest addition. The second issue is created by the narrowness of the lot and the location of the existing home. It would be 200 feet to get to a garage behind the home, as well as there's not really any way to get there. We looked extensively at trying to put a garage onto the front of the home, but it's small. So if you put a home on the left side, if you put a garage on the left side of the front, it would just block, actually, any garage is gonna block the home. It's not a big home. It'll block the living room. When you drive by this property, the only, it's actually pretty heavily screened except for the driveway. When you look down the driveway, you see this beautiful tree and this old home. And if we put a garage addition there on the front of the home, you'd see the garage addition. So having given up on that, we decided to try to put the garage detached on the, if you're facing the home on the left-hand side, behind the screening so you don't see it from the driveway. There's a few advantages to that. One is that we can pull in, the garage doors themselves will face the home. So we can pull in and park either in the garage where the door is facing the house or in the driveway so that the garage itself is shielding the cars from the road. So the side of the garage facing the street is, has windows, looks like a home. It's 100, it's still gonna be 100 feet from the street. And it's also screened. So between that screening and, it's not visible from the street. It would not be visible. But to the extent it was visible, it would look like part of the home.
Now, you had it like kind of staked out there with the ribbons, I believe, right?
That's right.
I did notice on one edge of it is a cover that looks like it goes to the cesspool. Is that gonna be right?
No, we already applied for Suffolk County approval. The septic system's gonna be upgraded. It's actually gonna go now on the side of the house.
Slightly behind it.
Yeah.
It'll be gone, okay.
Yeah, it'll be abandoned completely.
And the other thing is the pool house. Does that meet the setbacks?
Pool house not being changed. It's been there for...
I know.
Oh, does it meet setbacks?
Yeah.
I have to look at the survey. I think it's been there 40 years or so.
Probably not. It's 4.2 off the lot line and it's like 5.7 off the western line. And sometimes we'd like to get something back if we can.
Oh, okay.
Is there any possibility that could be moved, maybe? You have a lot of room back there by the pool.
It's basically rebuilding the pool house, correct?
Well...
I just, if I could just continue for one moment and then maybe circle back to that.
Yeah, okay, all right.
The garages in the front yard are pretty common on the street. There's two at 100 and at 42 that, they're attached. They're not detached like we're asking for here, but they are, they are in front of the home, which is what we could do here, but it would destroy the aesthetic quality. The other thing is that we're 97 Moses Lane, 85 Moses Lane came before you two years ago.
They've got a garage right in the front.
Yeah, detached garage right in the front. They had the advantage that we don't have, which is they were redeveloping the entire property at the time. So theoretically, there was maybe something they could have done. Without redeveloping our property, we're really confined to a type spot here.
Look, you can't even see this house. I have lived in that neighborhood for 50 years. I've loved it down that street three times a day. I've never even seen this house until I walked in there today. Never even saw it before.
Appreciate that. Right. I actually, same here. You have to pull down the driveway to see the home.
Yeah, in regard to where the pool house is, it would help me if I knew what's on the other side, what's to the west of that boundary line. Is there a house back there? Is there a pool back there? Is there a large piece of property back there? In other words, if the pool house doesn't encroach on anything, doesn't bother anybody...
Well, no one's complained for 40 years. I can tell you that.
And there's a pool equipment there all this time?
Yeah. This actually might be a better graphic sense of the property.
But the pool equipment has been there all this time, yes?
Yeah, the pool equipment, the pool house itself here.
Okay, but we don't know if that's...
Yeah, it would help if we knew what's on the other side, what's to the west of the real lot line. That would probably be into Fox Hollow, right?
Maybe somebody can look at Google Earth and take a look.
Somebody would be you.
I certainly didn't expect it to come up only because it's been there, it's, yeah, forever.
Well, when we get an application to get a variance, we look at everything that's on the property. And sometimes we try to get stuff that's not conforming to conform. If there's no harm on any neighbor to the west, you know, and it's been there all these years...
Right.
I don't think we'd have a problem with it. But we'd just like to know what's on the other side, to the north and also to the west.
I can look it up quickly on my phone. Just, sure, yeah.
Won't look like there's much room to move it unless they move the pool here. I don't think we're gonna do it there. That's too much.
There's no cell signal here?
No, there's no cell signal.
I'm getting it, though.
Anyway, there's no letter from that neighbor.
No, anyway, it probably is not germane to him either. Of course, if you moved it one way, you could get relief from the west, but you can't get relief off the north because you have to move the pool. I'm not gonna ask you to move the pool.
That's right.
That's nice.
There actually is nowhere to move it to. It's...
No.
Well, yeah.
You can move it to the east a bit, but you can't move it south.
Right, right. You have no cell signal here.
Have no Wi-Fi?
I don't have the Wi-Fi password.
That could be a good commercial.
Why don't you try to get us a Google?
Okay.
Or a survey of the property to the west and the north before the work session.
Okay.
Which is December 16th.
Okay, sure. Can I submit, I just prepared a statement rather than speak forever. I'll just submit.
Sure, sure.
I have a couple of things.
Yeah.
Okay, number one. The survey doesn't seem to show the setback of the garage from the front lot line. When the board considers an application for a variance to permit something in a front yard but beyond the required front yard, we like to see that setback shown on the survey. Because sometimes we will word it at least X feet from the street. We don't have that setback here. So if you would get the surveyor to show the setback of the proposed garage from the street. And the second thing. Apparently, there is a prior decision of the zoning board...
Right.
That requires approval for the second-story addition. That's alluded to in the hearing notice that the building department staff prepared. But there is nothing in my packet having to do with that prior decision. There's not a copy of the prior decision. There's not a map or a survey showing what we granted in the prior decision. So you need to provide to the board copies of, you know, enough copies for everybody, of the prior decision and whatever survey or map was used to show what we granted. We're gonna need to recall why we imposed a condition requiring approval for you to come back to us. I don't have any specific recollection of this application. I don't even know when it was.
It was 1999. I have the decision. I've submitted it, but it doesn't give you any, there's nothing in it to help.
If those had been submitted with the application, we would have gotten those at the work session and we'd at least be familiar with what you're alluding to, but...
I actually, I didn't believe it. It's even, it's 1999 condition requiring us to come back before we do any additions to the home, regardless of whether they meet setbacks or not.
Yes.
Yeah, so...
We don't remember the matter from 1999, what it was that we granted to you.
Do you know if it'd be a variance? I was curious as to what it would be.
And usually, if we impose a condition like that, we usually have a reason for it. But we don't even have before us what the old case was all about. So you need to provide us with that information.
Okay. I got it from you guys, but I'll submit it as part of the package.
Right, we don't go to the building department files or, you know, the old files ourselves and pull things out of it. That's the applicant's job is to...
So I'll submit a copy of the decision.
Go to the office and get copies of those things and submit them to us.
Okay.
Right. Madam, if you could just have a Google of the properties of the north.
So, right, sure.
You don't have to get a survey. Give us a Google. We can see what's on those properties. There might be a pool there.
Sure.
There might be a house up against the line.
Okay.
Or maybe there's not.
So setback of the proposed garage from the property line on a survey? A Google picture and a copy of the decision?
That's the old decision.
Yeah, okay, great.
Could I just...
Yeah, go ahead.
Just wanted to elaborate a little bit on the garage part of the application. This is the house that we're referring to. And the owners really wanted to keep the front as undisturbed as possible. They asked me to design a very small garage, just a car and a half garage. And since it couldn't really go in the back of the property and it couldn't go on the sides because the property is only 70 feet wide, it obviously had to go in the front. And I made them aware of the restriction regarding putting detached garages in the front yard. And we at first considered complying with the zoning, but this is the, this is the street side over here. We have a living room here and we have the kitchen over here. And in order for them not to disturb the front of the house, which they really love, we would have had to have attached the garage to the living room side. And that really wouldn't be terribly practical for them. So this is what really we came up with. We just decided to take the garage and flip it around so that the garage doors face the house. They don't face the street. And all you see from the street are these little windows here. And we put some vegetation in the front and it was very much like it was really part of the house. Here's the rendering here of what it would look like over here. And it also gives us the added benefit, too, parking-wise, of creating a little courtyard. The doors to the garage are over here now. So when you're parking, actually, I took my car on the property and I parked it right where you would park in front of the garage. And the garage would hide the cars completely. And also, too, the neighbors would not see garage doors. They would just see a small house. They don't mind seeing garage doors themselves. It also would give them a little bit more parking over here. So that's really the reasoning behind the location of the garage and the...
We understand that, I agree.
Good job.
Yeah, but that's fine. If you're in or out in the audience, I'd like to hear of this application. Therefore, we'll hold this one open, right, Rick? More data, things that you know about.
Thank you. We adjourn for all purposes.
Yes.
All second.
Thank you.
All right.
This is the application of case number 2839, JJET Holdings LLC, 199 Marina's Drive.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. I'm Tom Lawrence, an employee of the Partners in JJET Holding LLC, here to speak on their behalf in the matter of 199 Marina Drive. The application before you seeks a variance to legalize a storage lean-to on the rear or north side of our building. The structure was constructed some eight years ago as an error of omission and not commission in that the Partners honestly and simply misunderstood what is or was allowable and what the code intended the definition of a temporary structure to include. There was absolutely no intent to disrespect or disregard Village Code. And we respectfully submit that the Partners were unaware of the issue until there was a desire to increase onsite parking, which prompted this application. We also respectfully submit that there have been no issues, complaints, or concerns raised, issued, noted, or expressed over the eight years that the structure has existed, albeit in somewhat blissful ignorance. Further, no issues or concerns other than one remote neighbor's concern that I addressed in a telephone conversation about surface water runoff, which we are addressing as part of the planning board application for the parking. My conversation with our one concerned neighbor ended with a summary note of no objection and permission to convey that to the board, at least verbally. If I may continue, I would like to briefly address the five standards applicable per Village Code. As to the first standard, which addresses strict application of the code and practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships, we would submit that the structure is fairly de minimis in terms of its visibility and use, which is primarily a storage structure that allows us to keep a stock of wood and some equipment out of the weather and in a neat and tidy fashion, as opposed to piles of stored items under rather unsightly tarps or covers. As to the requested variance being the minimum variance that will relieve such practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships, we submit that the structure simply encloses that which would be permitted at the rear of the building. And also note that if we consider the setback for a detached storage structure, the requested relief is tempered, at least in a conceptual context. We believe it is the board's decision as to whether the requested variance is in the spirit of the code. We would submit that a storage shed on the rear of an attractive structure, out of the view of anyone in the public and on what we believe to be a very well-maintained property, does not offend the objectives of the code in a light industrial zoning district. We believe that should the board grant us the relief sought, there would be no detriment to the character of the neighborhood or district in any, or any diminution of property values in the vicinity in that there is virtually no visual impact, no issues of surface water runoff, noise, light trespass, odor or noxious fumes, dust, or any additional traffic or parking. Similarly, we submit that the requested variance does not involve any detriment to the public welfare, nor does it impair the intent and purpose of the Village Code. We thank you for your time and consideration in this application. I hope I have addressed the board's concerns, but will, of course, attempt to address any questions you may have now or ask that we hold the matter open as may be required.
You certainly can't see it from the south, Marina Drive. I doubt you can see it from the north because it's really kind of buried behind that berm there.
The berm and the...
Therefore, we're going to hold this one open.
I move we close for all purposes.
Thank you.
Yeah. That's a wood frame structure. You didn't get to the requirements area yet. We've been talking about it. It's tight now. They're very tight on the ground. On the application of the iconic land trust, case number two eight four zero two ninety six Hampton Road.
Evening to the applicant, Gilbert G. Flanagan, 21 South Main Street, Southampton. I have an affidavit of posting and mailing for the record. It is indicated in the package submitted, this is a request for several variances to permit the enlargement of the existing iconic land trust facilities located at the intersection of Hampton Road and Old Town Road. Specifically, there was a request for certain dimensional variances to permit an addition to the south side of the existing building, which would be moved closer to Hampton Road at a conforming front yard setback from Hampton Road. And then a variance to permit construction of a separate small office building to accommodate the staff needs of the iconic land trust. One of the things that you may have a question about, and I see that there's a letter from a neighbor or two in the file about need and so forth. As you may and may not be aware, the land trust currently rents space in the, in the basement of the Marin building that's located immediately to the east. I believe seventeen of their employees currently work in that basement. I think there was, I'm sorry, I may have the wrong number, but there are a number of their employees that work in the basement of that building and there were seven full-time employees that work at 296 Hampton Road. And the goal of this really is to combine those facilities because the future of the basement space is not certain by any means. So there was, there would not be any increase in the amount of employees. There's not going to be any increase in traffic or density because those people are already there. In fact, the ones that work in both places access through this property already and deal with the property at 300 Hampton Road. There are thirteen actually, staff members who work in the basement next door and there are seven that work at 296 Hampton Road full-time. So this project, if it's approved, will, will enable all of those people to work in the same complex, on the same piece of property. I will note at the outset that when we initially were preparing this application, the building department told us that we didn't need a certain of the side yard setbacks from the east property line because the building department took the position we could apply the four tenths relief clause because of the width of the lot running from east to west, not being totally sure that that was correct. We asked for the variances anyway, but if the building department is correct, we don't need any of those setback variances because if, if you apply the four tenths rule, the setbacks meet the four tenths relief provision. So the real thrust of this application, I think, over and above those variances, which are not substantial in any event, is the request to shift the zoning district boundary line 50 feet further to the south. And as you know, in the code, there is a provision which specifically gives this board the power and the ability to move a zoning district boundary line 50 feet. And we are requesting that that be done here because as you know from the map, the property is mostly in the Hampton Road office district and the southerlymost portion of it is in the R 12.5 district. It's also important to note that within the area that's zoned R 12.5, there's already an access way. There's an easement that runs from Old Town Road to connect to the Marin property located to the east, which will continue to be used whether or not this application is, is granted. Shifting the zoning district boundary line 50 feet to the south then also shifts the transitional yard, which is required between a commercial district and a residential district 50 feet further to the south. And if we do that, as shown on the map we submitted, some of the additional parking we're proposing will be located within that transitional yard. Now bear in mind that in the existing transitional yard, there's always, already, as I say, the access that runs to 300 Hampton Road and there's also an existing two-story house and garage that's located in that area. Part of the application would be to remove that building, but to create a space for the additional parking. That would have obviously a reduction in the amount of use which is related to that building, so there's really not that much of a net increase in the amount of off-street parking. And by the way, I should point out, as the application shows, that if this plan is approved, we would not need any off-street parking relief. We would provide the number of parking spaces that this project would require. So again, as I say, the, the key is to consolidate the function of the iconic land trust. This is its home base. It does have satellite offices elsewhere, but this is its, its home base. And to preserve the existing office building and to design the addition and the separate building in the same manner as the principal office. You've submitted with the application some conceptual renderings done by John David Rose, the architect, who was here if you have any questions of him. It's also important to note that, as you can see from the site plan, the proposed activity will more than comply with Suffolk County Health Department requirements, so there's no question of requiring any variance relief from them. A couple of things I'd like to submit to you, because I did see that there was a letter from some, some of the neighbors, which was dated, I guess it was 195. And the first thing I'd like to submit is a Google Earth view of the subject site and I've labeled, color shot, and then there are some photocopies, but I've labeled the land trust property, the property immediately to the south and the property, property immediately to the southeast. They're all labeled to show their relative positions to the land trust property and also the vegetation that exists in that immediate area. So I'll hand those up. I would note for the record, and I think it's significant, only one of the people who signed the letter that was submitted to you abuts this property. And at a tangent, I would submit in the southeast corner, the property that's most directly affected by this application is the property immediately to the south, which shares most of a common boundary line with the iconic land trust property. And I'm happy to report that that, that neighbor, Mary Lynch, has provided me a letter indicating that she has no objection to the application. So I think that's significant when the one most directly affected has no objection. As it turns out, Ms. Lynch is here this evening and I don't think she plans to say anything, but she can call me a liar or not, but I have a lot of it. Now, in addition, we did take, obviously take the neighbors' comments into consideration and the land trust has actually prepared a, a little response to some of the points raised in that, in that letter and I'll submit that for the record as well. I won't take time to read it, but it's, I think it's fairly self-explanatory. I will highlight a couple of points in it. One of the things is that it does not accurately characterize how many people will be working on this property. It also addresses the concern that there'll be a lot of social events and charity benefits and so forth at this property. There will be no change in that. I think there's only one annual event that they normally have and they occasionally have small meetings, but there won't be any change in the use in terms of parties, benefits and that sort of thing. So I would, I would ask that you take this into consideration as well. In addition, in terms of the concept of a transitional yard, we've come up with a schematic landscape plan, which would show increased screening along the south property line and also proposed screening in an island, which is located to the southeast, which we would propose to implement to make things look even nicer than they are. And I'll offer that for the record. As I'm sure you can appreciate, if this application makes its way through this board, we would still have to go to the planning board for site plan review and they'll have comments about drainage, landscaping, lighting, and things of that nature. So there'll be even more security that those things will be adequately addressed, but we're thinking about them already. This is a somewhat unusual site. It is a corner lot and as you know, right across the street from it to the west is, is a gas station. Then immediately to the east of it is a rather large office building, which as I say, is shared and used by the trust. We are getting rid of the non-conforming residents. If you could look at the, in fact, I'll hand up the, the copy of the existing condition survey, which I may or may not have given you with the application package, but among other things, it shows where the existing house is. And that is in a non-conforming location in a couple of spots. We'll be getting rid of that non-conformity. And you can plainly see here what I was talking about before in that even within the zoning district boundary line, the house actually straddles, straddles that boundary line, which is a condition that wouldn't currently be allowed. So I think that's about all I have to say at this point. I do have representatives of the land trust, if you have any questions about their particular use of the property and any of their, their future plans. We don't plan to change the operation of the land trust. The real goal is to make the facilities more suitable for the trust as it, as it currently exists and what its current needs are. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try and-
We do have this letter in opposition from Bernstein and Kevin L. Murphy and joined in opposition by Mark and Jerry Beska, Cameron and Elizabeth Breitner, and Idrina and Robert Peterson.
Right. I will point out for the record that I believe the only property that directly abuts this is the Breitner property and I would draw your attention to the aerial photograph, the Google map photograph that-
That's at 55 Leland Lane.
Right. It's, it's a, it's a flagpole lot that comes off and the access is on Leland Lane, but the body of the lot is further in. It should be noted that what is closest to the land trust property is, appears to be a pool and a poolhouse. And if you look at the, the aerial photograph, you'll see the dense screening that already exists and we would be willing to augment that screening if that's desired.
Now, I do seem to think that you're going to add a whole bunch of staff-
No, but-
Twenty-five, I need to know if you're not.
Abs- all we're doing is we're taking the people who work right next door and we're consolidating them. No, we're not, we're not increasing. So we're really not increasing the traffic that goes between this property and the property next door. The same number of people will be coming to work.
But they, where do they park, the thirteen?
They just park some on this property and they park some on the property next door.
But they're going to lift the house and move it, put a new, a deeper basement and finish this basement? Is the basement in the house used now for office space?
What, where they're, the basement that they're using is, is next door, yeah?
I know, but the, the house is there, they're going to lift and they're going to move.
They're going to get rid of it.
No, the front house.
Oh, the, yes, yes, the, the existing office-
They're going to lift it, move it, and it looks like they're going to put in a new foundation.
Right.
With a deeper foundation so that that will become workspace also? Is it used as workspace now that?
I'd have to ask the land trust people.
No, it's used as storage space now and it will continue to be storage space even when it's the new building. They won't move it until it's ready, sorry.
Perhaps I could help?
Sure. John Rose, the architect.
I know the home is-
Come on, you'll probably have to use the microphone so we can pick you up on the camera.
Currently, as you know, the home is a rather historic structure. And in this image, you can see it, our goal is to, as you pointed out, to lift it up, put it under a proper foundation because the current foundation is not in great condition. And it will be, continue to be used for the storage of records and things like that, but we're not using it as habitable space.
But I mean, it was an outside staircase, a whole bank of windows. It looked like that it would be set up to be used with future office space, which I don't know then, does that require more parking, you know?
Yeah, that would require additional parking. And back to this board, but the outside staircase is to get heavy files and things like that into the basement.
Yeah, that's, I have nothing else unless you have any-
So, so the basement's going to be unfinished for now?
Yes.
As I say, if we decided to use it, then we have to come back either to this board or-
Provide parking and all with it, yeah.
Jim? Rob? Jerry? Rick?
For the moment, just some technical comments. I haven't had an opportunity, having just got this Tuesday night, to look at it in much detail, but, so let's start with a couple of technical comments. First of all, you're asking for a variance per 116 dash 28B to extend the division line so that more of the property is in the HRO district.
Right.
That extension can only be to the lot line of this property. The site plan that you've submitted from the surveyor, it shows the 50-foot distance. That's the maximum that can be extended, but it's, it's not all on their property. So we're going, we're going to need a revised map showing the new locate, new line of the zoning division line, but it's going to have to jibe with the property line.
Okay.
Are you following me?
Yep, absolutely, yep.
Okay.
Sure, no problem.
And then the 50-foot transitional yard is measured from that shifted zoning line. So I think we need to see on the map a line that delineates the transitional yard that would result from this application. It's not going to be 50 feet from here, it's going to be 50 feet from-
Got it.
From there. So we can get a little better idea as to how much of this property is going to end up being in the transitional yard.
Okay.
You know, as you're well aware, we have on various occasions in the past extended the zoning line, division line per that section for split lot properties. I seem, I'm pretty sure it was done for the property next door a long time ago. But it's, it's, we still have to look at the 50-foot transitional yard measured from that new line, so I think we have to get a better picture of that.
Okay.
I don't know if it would be possible to submit this information in a, for lack of a better word. If you just add it all onto this map with all the site plan, drainage details and stuff like that that you need on there, it becomes very cluttered.
Okay.
So maybe you could submit a separate map showing this information about relocating the, extending the zoning line and then the 50-foot transitional yard, but also showing whatever parking spaces, et cetera, are going to be in the-
Right.
-transitional yard. I'm not asking you to take that off.
Right, I understand, right.
And then if you could provide- That's the maximum that can be extended, but it's not all on their property. So we're going to need a revised map showing the new line of the zoning division line, but it's going to have to jibe with the property line.
Okay.
Are you following me?
Yep, absolutely, yep.
Okay.
Sure, no problem.
And then the 50-foot transitional yard is measured from that shifted zoning line. So I think we need to see on the map a line that delineates the transitional yard that would result from this application. It's not going to be 50 feet from here, it's going to be 50 feet from there.
Got it.
So we can get a little better idea as to how much of this property is going to end up being in the transitional yard.
Okay.
You know, as you're well aware, we have, on various occasions in the past, extended the zoning line, division line, per that section for split-lot properties. I'm pretty sure it was done for the property next door a long time ago. But it's... We still have to look at the 50-foot transitional yard measured from that new line, so I think we have to get a better picture of that.
Okay.
I don't know if it would be possible to submit this information in a... For lack of a better word, if you just add it all onto this map with all the site plan, drainage details, and stuff like that that you need on there, it becomes very cluttered.
Okay.
So maybe you could submit a separate map showing this information about relocating the... Extending the zoning line and then the 50-foot transitional yard, but also showing whatever parking spaces, et cetera, are going to be in the transitional yard. I'm not asking you to take that off.
Right, I understand, right.
And then if you could provide setback data for those parking spaces from the relocated boundary line of the district, which is going to be the property line for the most part, so that we can see how much of the resulting transitional yard is being used for off-street parking, how much of a setback is being provided, et cetera, et cetera.
I can do that.
You know, we can scale these things off from the existing map, but it's a lot easier for us to visualize it if we have it in a better form.
That's right.
Without all the... And I don't mean to use clutter in the bad sense, because that's all the data that you need, but...
Maybe you can scale it up a little bit.
Sure, okay.
A little smaller.
Sure.
Okay, that's my technical comments for the moment.
If there are anyone in the audience that'd like to refer to this application, please come up.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Willa Bernstein, and I'm the neighbor who submitted the letter in opposition along with my husband, Kevin Murphy, and it's signed by three of our neighbors, two on Leland Lane and one on Old Town Road next to us to the south. And then it was just joined belatedly by Ruth Upton, who just had a copy of it recently. So she had an opportunity, she's in the audience, to join. She's at 53 Leland Lane, and I'm submitting a copy with her signatures on top and then a couple for your records. So I live at Old Town Road. We just bought our house six months ago. My husband and I closed on it. We bought a historic home. It's a stucco 1920s house because we love the neighborhood. It was the fulfillment of a lifelong dream to give my daughter, who's 13, who's here, the opportunity to be in the country, to do what I did when I was in the Hamptons with my parents, which was going to the beach, riding the bike on the street, seeing birds, seeing trees, et cetera. Frankly, we would never have bought the property had I thought that there would be the possibility of a working office building with over 20 people in a parking lot next door going in there. Actually, what I did was look at the shingled house on the corner, and I felt very reassured because it's the Pecanic Land Trust, and I know that they do good work out here, and they are charged in their mission, and they, you know, they're a nonprofit organization. Maybe they get state funds also, and they're supposed to protect the nature of the community and the land and the historic nature of things. So I thought, felt very reassured that there wouldn't be any kind of zoning variances being requested. Fast forward, six months later, we get a notice that they're planning to put in a two-story office building in addition, a 28-car parking lot, which would have access on our street, two doors down from us, meaning that people would be coming in and out of that parking lot all day long and changing the zone from what's a single-family dwelling residence, you know, that should be strictly enforced into what is in effect a commercial office building. I don't believe that the Pecanic Land Trust has at all met its burden of establishing that there would be hardship, or it would be precluded from using the property if this application were not granted. So in that case, I believe that their application should not be granted. The first thing I did was research the code and try to get some... Talk to some people out here about what are the rules. And so I called a couple of attorneys out here who said it's a very aggressive application. It's an unprecedented application. They're trying to change what is, in fact, a single-dwelling residence zone into a commercial zone, which would create a very bad precedent, I believe. And the second thing they said is, "We can't really help you because we're involved in big multimillion-dollar land deals, and it would be a conflict." So I believe that the Pecanic Land Trust has to really establish that they would be burdened. In fact, when you go to their website, it says that their mission is to buy up land. They sell it back to people with restrictions to enforce zoning so that you have beautiful farmland and beautiful vistas, and the land is kept within the zoning code. So it seemed... I don't really understand why offices, you know, there's a necessity to put offices in the middle of a residential district which has little homes and is quaint, and why do they need to do an office when they're a nonprofit that specializes in real estate and could find a more suitable place to have their offices?
Well, they do already have the office there. They have the office there for years.
The property's in an office district.
They do, but...
How many is in the office district?
Yes.
It's not in a residential district, it's in an office district.
Yeah, but part of their land is zoned. They are 12.5 zoning, which is single-family homes.
Last little piece to the sound.
Yeah, there's a non-conforming use there, which is a house.
That has to do with the transitional yard that I was talking about before.
And their application is seeking to completely eliminate the transitional yard so that their offices and their parking lot, 28-car parking lot, would be directly on top of the neighbor, and then also what's to prevent next time they want to increase their staff size, doing more non-conforming uses? And basically, the bottom line is that the code doesn't permit it. In fact, the code, in terms of that 12.5 zoning, the residential one, single-family dwelling, says that specifically nonprofits are prohibited from getting special exceptions. The application is based on asking for a special exception. The code prohibits nonprofits. The only type of property or use that would be permitted would be a religious use, or they have to stick to the single-family use. There is that provision that they're citing where you can...
It's not single-family, it's an office, and they're in an office district.
I think you're misunderstanding the application. Except for a triangular area in the rear of the property, the property is zoned in the office district.
The front of the property on Hampton Road is zoned in the office district.
All of the property except for a triangular area in the rear is zoned in the office district zone.
Right.
Their proposed office buildings are in the office district zone.
But they want to put their parking lot and the entrance on Old Town Road.
This application involves... It really involves is locating parking places within the 50-foot transitional yard.
Yes.
That's what the application is about.
Yes, and we feel that there should be that buffer... There should be no exception to the buffer of the 50-foot zone. There should be no access to a business's parking lot on Old Town Road.
An access road is there already.
Aren't they getting rid of a building now that's...
They're getting rid of a single-family dwelling that was zoned in that back part of the lot that's non-conforming, and they're trying to change it to another non-conforming use, which is the parking lot for the office building. And earlier in the hearing, you know, that's part of the code. You can't change a non-conforming to another non-conforming. It should be changing a non-conforming to a conforming use. And a couple of the neighbors seem to be okay with the changes because they're proposing tearing down that house, which is being rented out and is noisy, and they don't like that non-conforming use. But to change it to a parking lot where there are going to be cars coming in and out of there, and they, you know, they're adding additional employees to that space, so we're on that street, two doors down, you know, where my daughter rides her bike, there's going to be people coming to work in and out of that parking lot. The code says that a commercial office building should have the entrance to the parking lot on a commercial street, so it should be on Hampton Road. It shouldn't be on Old Town Road, right in the middle of a residential street.
It's there now.
It is there now, but they're moving additional...
There's an access road that goes back to the other building that's on the east of it.
Right, but if they're relocating 15 or 20 employees from the basement now to this other building, and they're building another two-story office space, they're covering a lot more than 20% of the lot, which is their allocated amount under the code. The entire lot is now being covered under this plan with a parking lot, with asphalt, with... To an additional building, with an addition to the original building with the breezeway. The entire lot is being covered. My question is, why is an office building, even of a nonprofit, if we think they're doing good work, why isn't it, you know, where the Hampton Jitney is located or in another commercial area?
It's in an office district. I think you're missing that point. It's an office building in an office district.
But right next to residential properties where the...
It's still an office district. Just to make it clear, it's just what it's next to.
Yeah.
It's an OD district.
But the application is...
You bought your house close to the office district, because there's another office building right next to that, you know, the mall, you know, the...
Maran.
Yeah, so I mean...
Insurance agent.
Yeah, you know, so I mean, isn't that closer to your house than this one?
I don't think so, but what we saw was a shingled, old, historic building, which now they're proposing moving that to the front of the lot, making the setback smaller, eliminating the 50-foot buffer zone, putting another two-story building, and creating a larger parking lot. So that's a really substantial variance that they're asking for. But basically, the, you know, and in the code, it says they're asking for this exception. Nonprofits can't get those exceptions to the code. They should, I believe, follow the zoning rules because that's actually in their mission statement.
The provisions of... I'm not trying to be difficult, but the provisions of the zoning code that you're citing have nothing to do with this case. I can understand if you have opposition to the case, but you need to focus on... If you want to be helpful in your opposition, you need to focus on what's before the zoning board by way of a variance. And I'm not saying that it's a simple variance or a big variance, but what it involves is locating off-street parking spaces within 50 feet of the boundary line. That's what the case is all about.
And an additional two-story, 1,500 square foot...
That doesn't need a variance.
Well, it seems to me that that took up more of the lot than was allowable under the code.
What needs the variance from the zoning board is all the off-street parking spaces that are within 50 feet of the rear of the property.
Yeah, I thought the other setbacks were also being they were asking for dimensional variances as well.
Okay, I'm talking about what affects the residential district. You've been focusing on the residential district aspects of it, and I'm trying to get you off of the zoning code sections that you've cited that have nothing to do with this case, and to focus your attention on what the case is about.
We also don't want a 28-car parking lot next to our...
What the case is about in relation to the residence district is locating off-street parking spaces within what would otherwise be required to be a 50-foot buffer.
Well, we...
But that's what the board has to focus on, and any comments that you have that relate to that would be helpful.
Well, I think in all cases, there should be the 50-foot buffer, because that's the intention of the planning, the zoning board, and the, you know, to have the buffer between residential districts and commercial uses so that you have some protection from traffic, from people going back and forth and so on, and noise, and et cetera. So, and I didn't see any exception when I looked at the code in terms of getting rid of that buffer unless they show extreme hardship, or they haven't looked at alternatives. And I didn't hear anything in the presentation about what alternatives they sought for more suitable office spaces that aren't directly adjacent to a residential neighborhood. And we have the four neighbors who are joining us. I think if we had more time, most of our neighbors would be against the project, except that they're getting rid of the non-conforming use, which was this rental house, which apparently created some noise, but I don't think that's a justification for changing the character.
There'll be more time. This case will be adjourned tonight. We've requested additional information from the applicant that better depicts what the application is all about, and so there'll be more hearings on this.
Okay, the only other thing I would ask for was the environmental impact statement because it involves some state laws involving the environment. They're planning to put a 10-by-12 cesspool on the site, so how does that affect the environment? And I think if the nonprofit is receiving state funds, there should be other, you know, they are held to a higher standard. So, you know, perhaps it should be referred out for an opinion from the planning board as to whether this fits in with the general scheme of things, because I think that's in the zoning code.
So you were not here this last summer?
No, we just closed.
So you don't know how obnoxious that rental house was?
No, I personally don't. I just have heard that that was the reason that a couple of the neighbors were in favor of getting rid of that, because that was, you know, a more upsetting situation. So, no, I didn't experience that myself.
Because, you know, one can imagine that that might be a net improvement, removing that and having some people park there, you know, during normal business hours might be a good trade-off for your comfort.
Quiet at night? Be quiet all weekend?
Yeah, I mean, what I'm concerned about is the traffic. There's already the public bus that goes down our street, and, you know, having a lot of off-street parking, people going in and out in terms of wanting to walk on the street and bike on the street, I feel. And just also in terms of the precedent, I don't see what, if a nonprofit who's doing good work, and I grant you that, is, you know, can get a zoning variance, then what's to prevent any nonprofit that says they're doing good work to go outside the, you know, the provisions of the code? And in terms of our own process, we just felt like whatever the requirements were for setbacks and other things, we should respect and observe because we're in a community where we want to keep it historic. We're here because it is quaint, and so I don't understand the justification for asking for that.
And if I could give you some advice, you might request, if this gains... Moves along, and the parking looks like it's going to go in, you can talk about barriers, vegetal barriers and such, to shield against lights and sound and stuff.
And with screaming.
Right.
Usually, that would really gave you, looking at the parking, there's still the issue of people going in and out of the parking lot and, you know, people walking up and down the street, you know, riding bikes. So that sounds like it's your biggest concern.
It is, but...
Old Town Road is a very busy street, isn't it?
Yeah.
Very busy.
Yeah, I just, I don't feel like we should add to it, or why, you know, if the code says that the entry should be on Hampton Road, or, you know, maybe it should be on Hampton Road, or that just you shouldn't be allowed in terms of having that access.
Well, as I say, they already have the access road.
Yeah, they already have it, and they're already working on it.
Two of them, and they're already...
Yeah, it's just...
Using it for years and years.
Yeah, I just, under this plan, I fear that it's going to be more used, and then it's a...
Well, the workers are already parking on that property and the property next door already, so it's not like they... It's new parking. It's their existing employees that are working in the basement next door, so they're either in that parking lot or this parking lot. It's not like they're adding 18 more people on top of the people that are already parking there. It appears that the net number of cars aren't going to be, it's just that instead of parking on that property, they're parking on their own property.
So they aren't running parking spaces?
Whoa, 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 you have to come up here.
Can I come?
Sure.
I'm just, I'm sorry. I'm the neighbor at 53 Leland. I'm Ruth Upton, I live at 53 Leland Lane. I actually, I've been out of town, so I just heard about this two days ago, so it's a little bit new to me, but I am concerned about the character of the neighborhood in general, and I think there are things that maybe are not thought about if you don't actually live right near this area and you want to be in a residential area, and there are things like, well, you may screen it with trees, but there's going to be, I assume, a 28-car parking lot is pretty large, and I assume there's going to be put in more overhead lights to light all of that. And my second question is, these all of... I don't, I also repeat that I don't understand, I haven't heard clearly why this is truly necessary, and there are no other alternatives, and my concern...
They need more space.
So my, but there's no place else in Southampton they could get space? I mean, if they're saying there are uncertain future, there's an uncertain future...
They don't want to sell this property and move somewhere else.
Right, well, they can. So, I mean, the question is, does it degrade the residential character of the neighborhood, and are the benefits of being convenient for the Pecanic Land Trust enough to outweigh degrading the residential character of the neighborhood? And these parking spaces that...
Well, if they move elsewhere...
Well, here, let me finish this other point. The other point is, talking about whether this is really... I understand that there's already parking spaces. I understand there's already access, but the scale of it, I think, will be significantly increased, and I think those 17 people that are working next door, that are using parking spaces next door, where there's an uncertain future, I don't know what that means. I assume when the Pecanic Land Trust moves into 28 new parking spaces and all their employees in this big expansion, that space next door is going to be leased to somebody else, and that lot's going to be filled up, and those people are going to be there, and there's going to be 20 more people right next door. So there's going to be a lot more commercial activity, net-net, because somebody's going to come fill up that space. I honestly, I just believe that it does add significantly, not immaterially, to the commercial character, and I understand your point that... And maybe I need clarification on this. It looks to me on this map like the actual number of parking spaces that would have to be cut just because they, unless there is a variance within the residential zone, there are eight of these spaces, and I'm not sure where the 50-foot goes, but within the residential... So to me, that's a lot in and of itself, and so if you're saying, well, it doesn't matter what you think of the character of the neighborhood, everything else can be done, it would even help me out if you took away eight of those spots that are literally today in a residential zone, because 28 parking car parking lot and more people in the area next door are going to be filled up too.
I understand what you're saying, but you're so focused on these 28 spots, and you're asking these people, "Don't build here, move away." When they move away, somebody else will move in, and it might be a dentist group or a doctor's office...
That's fine if it's in the existing structure, and they haven't, if they haven't built this...
All day long.
But the existing parking lot is small, smaller and less obtrusive than this, and you're talking about expanding it significantly. It's going to be significantly more commercial and intrusive... It's going to be significantly more commercial and intrusive, and it's going to not look like a neighborhood anymore. And I'm not one of those people, I know the lawyer was saying how it shouldn't matter to anybody that's not directly abutting it. I'm not directly abutting it. To me, it's my neighborhood, and this would make a big difference to me in terms of the character and the feel of the neighborhood, and I don't think it should be, you know, lightly dismissed.
Is there anybody else who wants to refer to this application? Therefore, we're going to adjourn this for all purposes.
Some move.
One's there.
Bye.
On the application of case number 2841, Christopher and Renee Little, 259 South Main Street.
My name is Arthur Fraser, I'm here to represent the applicant. I think the basis of this application is whether or not the property be considered a flag lot, so we're applying for variance from the definition of the village code, have it termed as a flagpole property. Sort of have a Google Earth of the property, shows it in general shape and condition, it is that of a flagpole, but the difference is it has a portion of the pole that's a right-of-way, but in the code, it doesn't specifically mention whether or not, you know, that's relevant. So if the board determines it's, for all intents and purposes, a flagpole lot, then the second part of the variance would be in the front yard on the lakeside, where we go from 78.5 instead of 80. I don't, I don't really have anything else to say, so, up to the board in determining whether or not it should be considered as a flagpole.
What you're asking for, I think, is for a variance in order to deem it a flagpole lot so that you can elect Lake Agawam as your front lot line.
Right, and use the property for setbacks.
Otherwise, everything you're proposing, the swimming pool, the tennis court, the garage, they're all in a required, they're all in a front yard, the way the building inspector has laid it out.
Correct.
What you're doing is you're asking for a variance to make or deem this lot to be a flagpole lot so that you could elect Lake Agawam as your front lot line, and then the other line would be a rear lot line, so that some of these things would conform. First of all, I don't know that we've ever had a variance, ever had an application like this before. Basically, he's asking that you make Lake Agawam the front lot line and the other line the rear lot line, therefore, he wouldn't need variances for most of this stuff, and also, he wouldn't need variances for future stuff. So he's really asking for a general blanket variance that re-designates this property. We don't have much information having to do with this property in that aspect. All we have is a survey showing that there's.
A middle portion is a right-of-way.
A right-of-way here, obviously, that right-of-way must go to somewhere.
Goes, the owners own the portion between the right-of-way.
I'm not talking about ownership, I'm talking about easements or rights to use. I don't know whether this is a private, what we consider a private road, and therefore, the eastbound line has to be a front lot line, and this board doesn't have the power to give you what you're asking for. We don't have any information on what the surrounding properties are, what their access to it is, is there a private right-of-way running from South Main Street back here that serves various properties? I have no idea, you haven't given us any information.
There's a second one there too, it serves the one toward the right.
Pardon?
It serves the one toward the right of this house, toward the north of this house. If you come down what looks like the pole off of South Main Street, you swing a left to get into this property, you go straight ahead, you go into the property to the north.
We don't know what deed and rights, rights of way might exist here. It might help if you gave us copies of the sufficarity tax map sheet for this section, and we could see what the adjoining properties look like and.
Okay.
What their accesses are. You might have to end up providing us with deed and title information as to what rights of way exist, because if this is, if this right-of-way is a private road under, under our regulations, we can't eliminate that as a front yard. You could, you could start over and ask for variances to have certain things within the front yard, but you haven't taken that approach. You've taken the approach of trying to get Lake Agawam to be the front lot line. We don't have any information upon which to even judge whether we can do that or not.
Okay, so you would need more.
I don't know.
Data from the attorney, I guess, about who actually owns the right-of-way, who has access to it.
It's not a question of who owns it, it's a question of who has rights over it, how many parcels are served by it. Kevin just indicated that it serves the land to the north.
Well, parcel, parcel A is owned by the applicant.
Okay, I don't care who owns parcel A, I don't care who owns the right-of-way. What I want, what we need to know is who has rights to use it, to go travel over it. That's what determines whether it's a private road or not. Presumably, there may be people that have a right of access over your parcel A, I'm just guessing. Otherwise, how does parcel A, how does that even exist? We don't know to what extent there are rights of way down here or who they serve. How you're going to go about getting that information is something that, if you don't know how to do it, you may need to hire an attorney to do it. It may require title information. I can't tell you how to present your application.
Yeah, no, the document was prepared, you know, by an attorney, I'm just here to present it. So you obviously need a lot more legal information than I'm capable of giving you, so I'll go back to the attorney and ask him to research it.
There's just a couple of other things I wanted to mention from a quick look. Your proposed tennis court does not conform to the.
You know what, you're looking at different, different data, because we're only, we submitted new surveys, all we're asking for is the building, the tennis court was removed, and the pool is existing, and so is the tax garage, so.
When did that come in? When did that information come in? Did you ask them for the tennis court anymore?
No.
There's one that comes in November 18th.
I don't understand, and why do they want this to become a, and what's the purpose of wanting to determine it a flagpole lot then?
Uh, to.
We do have two surveys, both dated November 8th, no, the November 8th survey. We have a November 8th survey that shows what's existing, the house, the pool, the garage, and then we have a November 8th survey with revision through 9/11/14, which show a proposed garage, a proposed tennis court, a proposed pool, and some proposed additions to the house.
I have a November 18th.
Some here stated November 20th.
With no tennis court.
We have a survey that shows nothing being proposed, and a survey that shows all of these things being proposed. If you submitted something else, it didn't get into my package. Does anybody else have a survey that?
No tennis.
And then some show them as the garage is existing.
It is, yeah.
And then, but some of the other survey shows it as proposed, so these were built, and they're existing.
Yeah.
The garage's there now, it's a three-car garage.
Right, right.
Which I guess they're planning to tear down.
Yes, that's there now.
Okay.
Built last summer.
They're things brand new.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know why they're tearing it down.
We aren't.
You better start over. Does anybody else have a survey showing what he's proposing? Because I don't know what he's proposing.
You have one too.
I don't have any, it's February 18th.
November 18th, it's stamped up top. You can see it?
We're only proposing the additions to the building that are in pink on the left side.
Oh, you're not proposing a tennis court?
No.
You're not proposing a pool?
You got it too.
You're not proposing a new garage?
No, the pool is already there, that's existing.
And that's going to stay?
Yeah.
Why did you file this map?
That wasn't filed by me, so I don't really know what you're talking about.
You don't think it was filed by us, do you?
No, I don't, but I don't know who filed it, but it's pretty funny.
All right, so for the record, we should delete every, we should scratch that map, and the only thing you're asking for.
Are the changes to the, to the building.
Except all your front yard stuff, et cetera, is not up before us anymore.
Just, yep, yep, right, but it's still, we still need the determination that the Lake Agawam would be the front yard.
We can't, we can't, if you want us to render a determination based on this map that, if this is all you're proposing, is some additions to the house.
Right.
Then why get bogged down in lengthy legal data that you're going to have to put together and submit, and then you're asking the board to grant a blanket variance that in the future you can do anything you want to back here? We don't, the board doesn't do that. So why don't you ask for, leave it as it is, you're proposing a couple of.
Yeah.
Minor additions to the house.
Correct, on the west side.
The what you.
I don't know why Bo's doing it the way he's doing it, so I don't know anything about the legal stuff.
Why don't you make, apply for a rear yard variance? What is the rear yard requirement in this zone? I don't even know if you need a rear yard variance. What's the lot size? 75,000?
75.
Yes.
Let me just find the setbacks for a 75,000 square foot lot.
It's 88 block size.
The rear yard requirement is 100 feet. Well, why don't you start over, apply for a rear yard variance to the extent that any of your proposed additions are within 100-foot rear yard. And of course, then you need wetlands relief. And then it's simple.
Okay.
You don't have to get bogged down in all that other stuff that I would guess could take you months and months and months, and then end up being denied. I would have made that suggestion right off the bat if I hadn't not seen this map with all these proposed structures on it. Okay.
It's in the application. It's in the application too, I mean.
Let's withdraw this application without prejudice.
Okay.
Start over with a new, simpler application.
Looking for the rear yard variance, okay.
I'm going to withdraw this application.
Maybe several people in the audience might want to be heard.
If Chick's here, maybe Chick wants to give some input on the wetlands issue.
Couple of things just to help if you do reapply. First of all, I would like to see the wetland setbacks. Your application didn't provide any justification or information to support the relief that you requested for the wetlands setbacks. Those are outlined in the public notice, and so I think you need to speak to them and address them. The landscape setback was 125 feet, and the structure setback is 150 feet. So basically, there's already non-native fertilized landscaping within 125 feet, and there are structures within 150 feet. So, you know, typically, what I'm seeing is you're proposing new driveway area, garage below, and an addition above, a covered porch, and that seems to be it based on my understanding of what the application is.
Correct.
Within the areas that they're not permitted to be. Typically, there is some consideration given to the fact that there is an existing house there, but we don't often allow structures to be closer to the wetlands than what the existing structure is. And if that were to be entertained, typically, there would be mitigation involved, just in terms of reducing fertilized area, the lawn goes right up to the wetlands pretty much. You may want to take a look, the Board of Trustees did adopt a Lake Agawam management plan a couple of years ago, and it does speak to improving and increasing vegetation buffers to reduce nutrients and fertilizer running off into the lake and causing water quality problems. So I think that that needs to be considered, so I would look at existing structures, setbacks.
Let me just amplify what Chick's saying, you should, if you're going to pursue that, you should probably get a wetlands consultant, because you're going to need all kinds of things for the wetlands relief that consultants typically provide, but you haven't provided, and you have no experience with wetlands relief either. So you're in for a long haul unless you get, listen to Chick's comments, and if you're going to pursue it, you're going to have to provide a lot more stuff.
Okay, well.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, Chick, I just wanted to suggest that because.
Pretty much covers it, I agree.
Well, again, we, what we're proposing is only two feet closer to the wetlands and what's there now, so.
Looks to me as though the existing structure where the garage is going is about 88.5 feet, I think that was the dimension, and is proposed to be 67.9 feet, so that, that seems to be fairly considerable.
Oh, right.
Reduction in the wetland setback.
More than 20 feet.
Okay, yeah, in terms of the wetlands, I was looking at the property line.
I'd look for other ways to do that, to avoid that type of encroachment on the wetlands in an area where the structures are already non-conforming.
My comments only had, before, only had to do with the setback variance, zoning setback variance, had nothing to do with wetlands, so you need to listen to Chick as well.
Is there anyone in the audience who wants to refer to this application?
Hi, I'm Leslie Biddle, I own the property to the north, 257 South Main Street, and I think our question is really procedural. We all. We also received the public notice and a certified letter about what was being heard tonight, and then we show up and it's something completely different. So we obviously had all the concerns that with regards to wetlands, and then also encroachment upon our property, which runs down to the north. And whether or not it's a front yard or backyard, they were originally asking for a variance from the thirty feet to the twenty-five feet. But I think there's a lot of issues that you guys have all identified, but from our perspective, clear communication and notification when, you know, we just received this, never received the amended agenda for this evening, and the notification we received came in on the.
It only came in on Tuesday.
Not, not.
This year, and this is not going to be decided today.
Yeah, exactly, but my point is, is that notification, if we wouldn't have been here. I know, but there's just a lot of issues with the application, so communication with the neighbors, and I think it would be, it would be, we'd love to make sure that those certified notices that are sent to us, actually, are received on time about the wrong agenda.
Actually, what he did, he reduced what he was asking for. He didn't increase it.
It's not really because.
One's a side yard setback, and the other's for relief from a front yard setback. Those issues are completely different from a northbound neighbor, whether it's, he's, they're entitled to a twenty-five-foot setback or a thirty-foot setback, it's not apples to apples. So if we're here to argue about, or discuss about one thing, and we're actually talking about something different, it makes it difficult to.
For us to prepare.
As I say.
I know, it turned out to be, yeah, we'll be here next month.
That's why the application is being withdrawn.
Fantastic.
It's a vague, not clear application.
Thank you.
I didn't understand it.
We didn't understand it?
I didn't understand it.
Fantastic.
It needs, so they're going to have to start over and file a new application. Hopefully, it will be a more professionally prepared application, and better indicate what they're looking for.
Fantastic, we appreciate it.
And then you'll have to be notified again. If and when that comes up.
Is there anybody else in the audience who's to be heard in this application? Open for all purposes. Oh, no, that's right, this is withdrawn.
Withdraw this application with no prejudice.
He's withdrawing.
Okay.
So you, this fellow. Woolley Street.
We got next. On the application of case number two eight four two, one seventy-five Woolley Street LLC.
Lisa Zaloga, I am the architect for Amanda Taylor, who is the new owner of this property. I realize this property has been in front of this board a few times. And as I said, this is the new owner. So this property is on the corner of Woolley Street and Pelletro Street. You need one more?
Just a number of swans, just give me one short.
One short?
I could, you have two. Yeah, I have two.
Now we have each.
Okay. Yeah, I only gave you three pictures. So as I was saying, this property is on the corner of Woolley and Pelletro, and it's been in front of you a couple of times. And back in two thousand and six, a previous owner came to you and asked for a few variances, and those variances included maintaining an existing garage that was located kind of centrally in the property, and turning it into a pool house. Various additions to the house, a porch added onto the house, and then a two-car garage added on the west end of the property. So a front yard variance was granted for, off of Pelletro, for the swimming pool to thirty-five feet. It was, a front yard variance was granted from Pelletro for the two-car garage to thirty-five feet. And then the various additions to the house were also given variances, mostly off of Pelletro. My client purchased this house, and she finds that the location of the pool house in the middle of the property, it basically hides the swimming pool from the house, and she has two young daughters. She does not feel the pool house should be there. So she would like.
Excuse me, for a second, do you have an ASBIL survey?
Um, I do. Where do I have it? I only have one, though.
Is that the existing conditions?
Yes.
Could you make a note to submit?
Absolutely.
Holdable copies?
Yes.
And also, before you go forward, I know you referred in the application to the prior variance.
But I did not give you copies.
We don't have copies of that variance, nor of the map that showed what we granted.
Absolutely.
We're going to need those to be helpful.
Yes. I apologize for not supplying them. So that pool house is currently smack dab in the middle of the property, and you can see from the pictures that it really divides the property in half. We would like to remove it, and I don't think that that is part of the variance. But in removing that pool house, what we would like to do is relocate the swimming pool, still maintaining that thirty-five feet that you originally granted, but relocating it closer to the house.
The only one, I guess you should go back and file.
We would also like to, since we are deleting and removing that twenty-by-twenty pool house, we would like to add ninety-seven square feet to the garage that was put on the west end of the property, and position a little tiny pool house attached to that garage. So basically, it will open up the property, I think. From the street, I gave you a drawing from the street, you can see there's an eight-and-a-half-foot-high hedge that runs along Pelletro. But you can still see that pool house, that pool house with that dormer on it, really, it increases the density of that lot, I think, a lot, so I think in removing that and just putting, you know, a flat in-ground swimming pool there, I think that the lot will appear more open and less dense.
You know, this is not your fault, nor the fault of the new owner, but it seems to me that when this first came before us, that was something that we suggested, and it was rebuffed by the.
Was it? I can't speak to what they, I have no idea. But, so, I mean, we want to get rid of it.
You're removing one building, right?
Removing one building. Relocating the swimming pools, still maintaining the setbacks that you granted in the previous variance. Adding ninety-seven square feet to that garage, and converting part of it to a pool house. Maintaining that, still that thirty-five feet from Pelletro. The building will be five hundred and twenty square feet, so it will not exceed the zoning. And then putting a porch on the back of the house, which meets the twenty-five feet that you granted in the original variance for a porch. And again, that would just be an open porch. And you can see that in the drawings, not overly visible behind that eight-and-a-half-foot-high hedge.
Open, but it's going to have a roof on it.
It will have a roof on it.
And the pool equipment is where?
The pool equipment is oddly enough, I don't know, but I can locate it in the garage.
Okay.
Or I could locate it on the side of the pool house, whichever you would prefer. I guess I couldn't, because that would be within the twenty-five feet, so I can locate it in the pool house, or in the garage.
And do you still have enough parking doing that?
I do have enough parking. In your original variance, they asked for, they asked for a variance to have two parking spaces in front of that garage. And you actually noted that they only needed one. But now you're allowed to actually park in a front yard, as long as it's screened properly. So I'm losing one spot, so I would then go to having two in the front of the garage there.
You also have that access up toward the front.
We also have that access up towards the front.
Remember, we had some discussion, thought, well, you probably don't, but they wanted to put access off of Woolley Street.
I actually happened to be at that meeting.
You were, and we said no.
I was, I remember that.
That's when you broke this one.
You adamantly said no. And that's fine with us.
That takes care of the parking then. How many bedrooms are there, four?
Uh, yes, there's four bedrooms.
You need three spaces.
Need three spaces.
Which you have.
Which we have. We actually have more than that, I guess, if you get.
Yeah, you have more than that if you can't be hanging up by the corner.
So there's like a net gain of two hundred square feet of additional.
Lot coverage?
Yeah.
Yeah, the lot coverage, even though I think the density on the property is going to feel like it went down, the lot coverage, because I increased the size of the swimming pool. I went from a twelve-by-twenty-six.
Coverage also, correct?
The porch, yes. But that's, again, that would be an open, it's not going to have walls, it'll be. If you look at the pictures, I think, you know, you can just, you can see how that pool house is right, it really divides that property up, and hides the swimming pool behind it.
Yeah, I don't have pictures. You only got one set.
He's three.
Something to be aware of, putting obstructions between the house and the pool visually.
A lot of mass to that. I wouldn't like it.
No, it really breaks, it just really breaks up the property.
Right, you have sound, and that brings your offerings.
I want to see what's going on.
They're only eight and eleven.
Anything else for us?
No, I know I need to supply you with copies of the variance.
Anybody else that you need?
Well, more copies of the existing condition survey.
Yes.
And also, not only the prior decision, but also the map showing what we granted.
The audience might be heard.
I live next door, and as long as the pool house doesn't come closer to the street, it stays parallel, you know, to the garage, and you've put the pool equipment as far away from my property, like in front of the pool house and not by the garage, I think it's going to make the place look better. I mean, it's a swimming pool right now, that if you put your arm out, you're at the other end. I mean, it was stupid in the beginning, and I think they're making it maybe better looking.
Hanging out the pool house, I think, helps a lot.
As long as it doesn't come closer to the street, I mean, that house was one giant variance, come on.
Well, at this point, at this point.
It was a giant variance back then.
We got your point.
No, they haven't asked for a variance. I just want to make clear, they haven't asked for a variance for the swimming pool equipment, so at the moment, there's no place to put the equipment other than inside the building. Because any other place would require a variance. So they're either going to have to bury.
I think they're going to actually make the place look better.
They're going to have to either apply for a variance for that, or put it in the building.
Does anybody else like to hear this application? So we're going to hold it open then, right?
Yeah.
It'll be closed for all purposes.
Second?
Home favor? I'm not getting rid of much. On the application of case number two eight four three, Richard Gelfon, Two Squabalane.
For the applicant, Gilbert twenty-one South Main Street, Southampton, I also have Brent Reiner from InterScience, Ian Handback from LaGuardia Design, and Frank Greenwald, the architect of an affidavit of posting and an affidavit of mailing. Hopefully, this should be a rather pleasant application. Application for a wetlands permit only, wetlands special permit. And I will mention to you, as you probably know, you did submit a revised set of drawings before your work session, and they're the drawings that you should be working from. And I want to start out by thanking Mr. Voorhees for giving us some helpful and constructive comments, and these plans hopefully reflect a number of them. I think probably the most important map I can talk to you about, and you should probably have in front of you, is the comparative analysis map. Brent can put that on an easel, because it shows what's there now, and what will be there if this is approved. But this little table over here really says it all. As you can probably know, this, the existing house pre-exists. A number of years ago, I think I got a wetlands special permit for the existing swimming pool. But the goal is to redevelop this property, remove the existing house and the existing swimming pool, and slide everything further from the wetlands, which, by the way, were recently flagged by Chick, which is shown on this map. And you can see we have the various wetland setbacks shown on the map, and the, all of the existing house will conform with the wetlands setback for structures. Sanitary system will be greatly in excess of two hundred feet from the wetlands. The swimming pool will be pulled back from eighty-three feet from the wetlands to a hundred and twenty-seven feet from the wetlands, therefore, exceeding what the DEC's requirements are. And we're increasing the, well, first of all, there was hardly any buffer between the improvements in the lawn and Wicca Park Pond, and we will now have a buffer with a minimum width of fifty-five feet. So the net result of this environmentally, I think, is really is a winner. And we've also submitted a number of other drawings, including a site plan prepared by LaGuardia Design, which shows the construction methodology and the staging areas for construction, which will be, again, very sensitive to the wetlands. But just to reiterate, at its nearest point, when the new house is constructed, the wetland setback will be a hundred and fifty-five feet, so that exceeds the requirements. I talked about the swimming pool. The patios are also further setback, the sanitary system will have a setback of two hundred and fifty-seven feet from the wetlands. About the only thing that's not changing is the pre-existing tennis court, but we're not not doing anything with that, not disrupting anything or making anything worse with respect to that. I think probably the biggest thing is going to be the establishment and the enhancement of the wetland buffer. So I think that's really a summary of it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Have a consultants here, if they have any questions, them too.
Yeah, just to acknowledge that this was a very constructive process. We were asked to delineate the wetlands, but the applicant also asked to meet with us in advance of the first application. And then we even had an opportunity to exchange some information after that first submission, which resulted in the November submission. So this, to me, is somewhat of a model. It does remove an existing house that doesn't conform. It expands a wetland setback where one does not exist. It seeks to conform as much as possible. They have a fairly good-sized lot, so they've been able to meet the building setback. They're not able to meet the landscape setback of one-hundred-and-twenty-five feet. And so there are improvements proposed in those areas. But the offsetting factor are all the other improvements, in terms of sanitary system setback, the house setback increase, and the additional buffer, that I'm fairly comfortable, you know, subject to the board's consideration, that there's a suitable trade-off for that activity within one-hundred-and-twenty-five feet. One of the things that I just wanna make sure is that the entire area within one-hundred-and-twenty-five feet, with the exception of the pool area, is proposed as a red fescue lawn area that is native, doesn't require fertilization, and they're proposing only irrigation to get it established. And so I'd just like to ask perhaps Brent, if he's able to, or the landscape architect, to comment on the maintenance of that, how frequently it'd be mowed, and just to confirm that we may have conditions that, after establishment, no irrigation can occur and no fertilization can occur. There are other notes on the plan that I may suggest incorporating into conditions, and those have to do with the method of removal of invasives, retaining existing native vegetation that currently exists, and then re-establishing new plantings that would out-compete the invasives. So I think those are on the plan, but they may warrant being highlighted as far as conditions. And then I just had one other, two other quick points. In our preliminary meetings, I did ask that the pool drywell and any drainage drywells be located more than one-hundred-and-fifty feet. It seemed as though it was okay to do that, pretty easy to do. I think it was just an oversight that that wasn't reflected on this plan. So if the applicant confirms that, we'd expect to see a revised plan with that. And then a final comment to say that it looks to me as though the pool area does have quite a bit of patio area. And if that could either be pervious pavement, or, you know, pervious pavers, or have drainage, I think that would help in offsetting that activity within one-hundred-and-twenty-five feet. So those are my only comments.
Would you like me to speak to those four?
Sure.
All right, so our goal is to not fertilize the fescue lawn area at all. And you're correct that we only wanna irrigate for establishment. Our intention was to put in a permanent irrigation system in situations of drought, so that if we had water, we could. But if you would rather that was a temporary system, we can look at that as an option, certainly.
I think that'd be good, if it's just there to establish it.
Understood.
The concern is that it'll be maintained as a lawn. It's gonna kinda look like a lawn, but it is native. And so again, if you could speak to the cutting of it, if there's a program for that, or if it's just gonna be maintained as lawn, which I, you know, I do understand.
Our goal is to use this area as a functioning lawn. We tried to limit that footprint and make it as small as possible. It will be mowed, but we want the native fescue, because we knew that it wasn't gonna require the fertilizer. And because it's native, it's gonna do better in this climate and won't require additional irrigation. It may be a different lawn type, but.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
All right, and then your second point about the work that we're proposing along the wetland buffer. We recognize that there are species in there that may be native. There are also a number of invasive species that we wanna remove. So we're proposing to do all of that work by hand. We can't inventory all of that material now, because it's a pretty densely vegetated thicket. But we'll go in there and identify, and we're happy to tag and review with you any species that we feel should be preserved. And I think by doing that work by hand, it works to your goal of maintaining as much of that habitat as possible, rather than going in with a machine and clearing everything out. So I think that achieves.
And then the pool area.
In the pool area, we actually on L-two provide drainage calculations for that terrace.
Oh, I thought it was just for the roof.
Yeah, let's just confirm, hopefully that wasn't an oversight. License is based on, unfortunately. Let's see, so watershed, one paved pool terrace, so there's a calculation in.
Okay, great.
And then the fourth item, I apologize.
The drywells.
Yeah, that's not a problem at all. We can easily move those back and just extend the pipes, so that they all conform to one-hundred-and-fifty.
Yeah, as I said, it's a model. There were just a few little items that, you know, we've addressed. So, you know, we'll expect a resubmission, and I may even be able to have something ready for the next meeting.
Do you have any other?
Pardon?
Do you have anything?
Nope.
Anybody out in the audience like to hear this application? Hold it open or close it for decision?
What is it that they're submitting?
They're gonna revise the plan to remove the drywells.
Oh, okay.
They're gonna change the notes slightly, keep it pretty minor.
We could adjourn it for decision, subject to submission of the revised plan requested by our environmental consultant.
So moved. On the application of case number two-eight-four-four, Cameron Thomas Alghahanian, eleven-ninety Meadow Lane.
I'm Steve, you wrote it. Nancy of Art Tech with Aris Design. Our client is seeking to restore the wetland on their property. Eleven-ninety Meadow Lane. Near the end of a rather lengthy construction project, and now returning our focus on the landscape. And he has approximately point-one acre of wetland located on the north side of his property. He also, it's primarily phragmites and other invasive plants. There are some native plants mixed within that that he would seek to keep and replant. The phragmites has spread beyond the wetland boundary and is approaching southward. So the client, our client would like to restore the entire area, which is approximately three-quarters of an acre, native plantings. The goal is to have a metal-like planting with large strips of perennials. And similar project at fifteen. Fifteen-thirty-two Meadow Lane, that we used as a pricing. When we looked at this, it was approved by the board in 2013. So that's what our client is seeking to do at this point in time.
This is wetlands picture, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, there's really nothing else. This one's very straightforward. You know, it's characterized, it's a simple application that just involves removal of invasive species, establishment of a very aggressive relandscaping plan to out-compete the invasives. It is definitely an improvement to the buffer area around the wetlands. We're really just checking some of the species and going through very minor details at this point. I have no other comments. We did review the fifteen-thirty-two Meadow Lane restoration, and it worked out very well. So we'd be optimistic that this one would as well. So, you know, if there's anything minor, I can exchange that directly with, you know, the Aris Design office, but I don't expect anything.
Nick, are you ready on this?
Okay, I'm it.
Anybody out in the audience like to hear this application?
Is you gonna adjourn it for decision?
Yep.
Moving adjourned for decision.
Second? On the application of case number two-eight-four-five, Judith Guest, one First Neck Lane.
Good evening, board members. Wayne Bruin, O'Shea, Marc Cincig, Bruin, Southampton, on behalf of Judith Guest. This application is seeking area variances for an open porch on the northerly side of the existing townhouse unit. The property is known as Unit Eight on the Lot Eleven of the subdivision map of the Irving. Many of the board members may remember the history. This is the site of the old Irving Hotel that essentially was destroyed, and thus thereafter, it was an eleven-lot subdivision. The area that was zoned hotel was rezoned MF twenty. That northeasterly lot, right on the corner of First Neck and Hill Street, like I said, was rezoned MF twenty, and there was a site plan for an eight-unit townhouse development. The building is a two-story brick building. Each of the eight units subsequently were dedicated to have their own lot, which they own the underlying land, and which encompasses the portion of the building that they have, as well as a little rear yard. The subject lot is approximately two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty-nine square feet. And because of its size, if you do any addition to the building, it would require necessary side yard and coverage variances. We're here before you tonight to basically replace what has been an awning over the rear portion of the building with an open porch area, which would cover the area of the patio on the rear of the property. What I have for you, the application itself was submitted by the contractor that's been doing interior renovations. And we were hired a couple of weeks ago, and on November twelfth, I did submit to you a survey of the property with appropriate setbacks, lot coverage calculations. But more importantly, we submitted a copy of architectural renderings and elevations showing you the proposed porch. And I hope you've had an opportunity to look at those. We, the addition to the unit, as mentioned, requires zero side yard on the east, a four-foot side yard on the west, the total side yard, as well as lot coverage, because the existing building covers forty-nine percent of the two-thousand-square-foot lot, seeking coverage variance up to sixty-five percent. The variance applications of the eight units through time, interestingly, there is a little bit of history here. There was a variance granted to Unit Six, which is just to the west of this property. And that variance was granted in nineteen-eighty-six to put a swimming pool in the rear yard. Required certain coverage and setback variances, and the board granted that. And I provide you with a copy of that decision in here.
Is that pool just for that unit, or is it for the whole?
Just for that unit. Just for that unit.
You're using these numbers, this is really unit number one.
This is, no, our unit is number eight.
It has number one on the driveway.
Interesting, that may be the, that's the street address.
One to the west is number three.
It's known as, yeah, it's.
They only have odd numbers in there.
Right.
They don't use any even numbers.
I'm talking about the units as they were designated on the map.
Okay.
Okay, but it, street address, it is one first.
One First Neck Lane.
First Neck Lane, for postal purposes. It is a little confusing, a little confusing. So unit one is actually opposite hers on the south, as you first come in the driveway off of First Neck. And interestingly.
It's labeled fifteen, I believe, in there.
Excuse me?
I think it's labeled fifteen on the door.
Right. With respect to fifteen, we did review the records for all these units and what was submitted to the board, to the zoning board, planning board, building department. In the mid-eighties, there was actually a building permit issued to that property to do an enclosed patio. No variance was obtained or requested or otherwise, a certificate of occupancy was issued. And more interestingly, that property just recently, ownership changed. There was an updated CO provided, and it indicated that it was for an enclosed patio. And September, an application was granted for a building permit, and I believe there's changes occurring now to convert that enclosed patio into habitable space. There were other applications submitted to this board, but subsequently withdrawn by the applications for similar requests that the applicant is asking for here. The, as far as the zoning tests, we provided a number of documents. I also provide you some aerial photographs. This aerial photograph, you can see, although the lot lines aren't exact, because this comes off the Town GIS, and there's a little bit of discrepancy. You can see basically how the lots are designated and how, you know, the building is on one portion, and there's a rear yard on the other portion. So you can see the pool on Unit Six. This is to the north. This is the unit we have. We're right on the northeasterly corner. Access, as you know, goes down to the south and comes in on an interior driveway. I provided photographs, you can see they're screening along the driveway, so you really can't see the back of many of these units. I also provided a photograph from the intersection, and you can see the substantial hedges that are along both First Neck and Hill Street. You can't see anything but the top of the roofs of these units. So as far as visibility and harm or otherwise to the neighborhood, there is virtually none. The purpose, again, is to keep it an open porch. And my client is willing to consider a condition that, by this board, to keep it as an open porch and not enclose it for habitable space, if necessary. We did reach out, there is a homeowners association here, and.
I have a letter from them.
I was gonna ask you if you did receive a letter. They did reach, we reached out first with notices, but we did reach out to the president, who actually contacted the local attorney, Mr. Burke, who called us and indicated certain things. He thought the procedure here, because we do need our internal board approval on any architectural changes to units. And he thought the process would be for us to present this here first, and then go get the board approval. I understand, and you can clarify, but I was told the letter, basically, because of the timing of this. Just basically more time, and we're.
Asking for more time in order to.
We understand that, and we would expect this to be adjourned, so that they could have that time to look at it.
There's been some work going on on the east side of this unit, you know what that is?
Internally, in this unit, there's been renovations inside.
There's been some work on the outside, too.
I think it's doors and windows, doors and windows.
That's what they are?
Yes.
Access down to the basement?
I don't know what exactly, but there may be something going on down there, too. But I don't think it's for habitable space. There's also pictures, you know, this is the front of the building in addition to the architectural elevations. They're trying to mimic the architecture with their porch with what you see, the front porticoes or entries as well. So unless you have any further questions, I would expect, we want to also get our input from the homeowners association board as well. But if you have any particular questions or concerns that I can address by the next meeting.
The area that's back there already is paved, right?
Excuse me?
The area already is paved.
It's basically a patio that's going to cut.
They're going to replace that pavement with new pavement?
Yeah.
Okay. They're just going to replace the awnings with a container, right?
Basically, with an architectural porch, open and closed, open porch area, so that they can basically do the same things that they're doing under the awning.
So it's just going to be roofed, but it'll be open on all sides?
Correct. The elevations show that. If you look at the side elevations, you can see it's all proposed to be open. Like I said, my client's willing to consider, you know, consider any conditions this board would impose to keep it that way.
Have anything to board? Rick?
Just a couple of questions, because I'm trying to get a better picture on this. What is this that you handed up in your packet?
That was a copy excerpt from the site plan that the, was in the Building Department showing all the units, just so you have an idea what the unit nomination is.
This is, to my recollection, and I don't remember any other applications involving this subdivision.
I did provide you.
Guess that when, and I would guess that maybe when the, this subdivision was approved, there may have been modifications of dimensional regulations and restrictions and things like that that went along with the subdivision map. Otherwise, you know, you've got, it's hard to tell on this survey what's a lot line and what's something else. But I'm gathering that, you know, there are like zero setbacks on this lot.
Exactly.
Pardon?
I believe you're correct. It's interesting that we couldn't find.
If this was done as a subdivision map with individual lots, is that what it was?
Well.
There must have been, when the planning board approved the subdivision, there must have been, this is probably a cluster subdivision with common area and stuff like that. Again, I'm guessing.
I haven't been able to find a.
There must have been modifications of dimensional regulations that went along with the subdivision approval back at the time, and maybe restrictions and things like that. I'd like to, I'd like to have more information about this whole subdivision setup. I'm not questioning the legality of what's there, but there's got to be, you don't get zero setbacks without some type of relief, either through a modification in connection with a cluster subdivision or variances. So there must be a general thing for this whole subdivision that has dimensional requirements for it that went with the subdivision. And I think we should know what they are before we entertain granting a variance.
Be happy to research your records to try to find that, although in my, the two weeks that I've had, haven't been able to find a subsequent subdivision map to the original Irving.
Is there a subdivision map filed in the Suffolk County Clerk's office?
There is, and that is, you know, that was filed in 1981. This is, Lot 11 is the entire MF part, part of that. I believe.
But it was filed with lots?
No. I'd be happy to show you, Rick, a copy of the map.
It's late already.
Hang on.
I think you got to put together more background information for us. If this, is this Lot 1 on a file subdivision map, Lot 2 on a file subdivision map, Lot 3 on a file subdivision map? Must be something like that, because you're asking for setbacks from what you're calling lot lines.
I don't know what the village approved to have these individual lots for the individual units. I have asked the title company to look to see if a condominium map, but I'll read from your decision from the zoning board in 1986. The subject premise is a unit in a cluster type of subdivision which was specifically approved for the subject property, which is the only parcel in this MF20 zone. However, the only subdivision map that is filed is the original Irving map in 1981, which shows the subject MF20 property, an 87,000-square-foot lot, as Lot 11.
You got to do more homework.
Right. So it would be helpful, Rick, maybe you might be able to allude to us after reviewing maybe that decision. It might help.
I just skimmed that decision. It doesn't tell me anything.
But it was the basis for which this board granted the variance, the same type of variances that we're asking for.
25, 30 years ago. I mean, I wasn't.
Right.
You're asking us for a variance, and I don't know, I don't comprehend what you're asking. I don't. If this was a multifamily dwelling site plan in the multifamily zone, there wouldn't be lot lines. But you're asking for a setback variances from, quote, lot lines? Where do the lot lines come from?
Good question.
Go, do some homework.
I think, I think the village allowed the ownership to be divided and such.
Okay. I don't know what.
But I'll research that.
And I'm not doing your homework.
That's what happened. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody in the audience wants to have heard of this application? No? They're coming up or something. They should leave it. Therefore, Rick, we have to hold this open, right?
Yeah.
We'll hold this application open for all purposes.
All in favor?
Yes. Is there a chance you could read the decision?
Oh, if you get everything to us before the work session.
Yeah.
It's possible we might talk about it. It depends on how much we have to talk about at the work session.
I'm just trying to figure out what to tell my client, whether it'll be January, December, January.
Unlikely you'd have a decision at the December meeting. We've got a lot of matters on the agenda. I don't even know how they feel about the application.
On the application of number 2846, B.A.M. 40 Meadow Lane. Who's representing the?
Representing the appellant.
Appellant, you are.
I am, Anthony Guardino. The chairman's here to set up if you don't mind.
Mr. Chairman, my name is John Bennett. Yes, John.
I wouldn't have known that if you hadn't told me, John.
It's all right.
I don't.
Probably find out in a minute.
Yeah, he just made the paper. That's really fine.
Mr. Chairman, can I just hand out a couple of things?
Yeah, you can hand them over there. They'll be stamped, you know, one that has to be stamped.
Just hand it. I think you have more than we need here. If you need more, let me know. I sure do.
The top one.
Thank you.
It's the original, I don't know. Just pointed that out to you.
It's okay.
Just want to happen in the record.
Thank you.
Stuff.
More stuff.
Are they all the same?
I don't know.
Killed some trees on this bucket.
Here you go.
Here you go.
Mr. Guardino, since I gave you the courtesy of handing this submission that I had given to board about three hours ago, do you have any of those materials?
I think there are extras here. Yes, I can give.
Could you give me one?
Sure.
We got extras up here.
Extras up there. Can I approach?
I'll hand it down this way. Is that one? Is another one? Is another one? It's this one. Here's another one if he wants it.
If he wants it, all right.
I got some more here, coming right up.
Just the same. Just more copies.
Is this my local? I'm going to tell her. Is that two or one?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's just one.
I mean, two all of a sudden.
Great. Okay. Terrific.
Before, before you all get started, it looks to me like we have four submissions from the appellant. Affidavit of Jacqueline Parentow, excuse my French, Dr. Ronald W. Abrams affidavit, Elliot Goldstein affidavit, and then a FEMA pamphlet.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
I just want to make sure I have everything. And then we have a submission by Mr. Bennett in opposition to your appeal. And I guess that's everything we have. Okay.
I don't know if we have that. The one from John Bennett, do we have that one?
That was in our packet when we arrived tonight. He filed that apparently late this afternoon.
On November 20th.
Okay. May I begin?
Yep.
Terrific. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Anthony Guardino. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Farrell Fritz in Hopg, New York. I represent Thompson and Caroline Dean, who reside at 20 Meadow Lane, and also Linda Hackett, who resides at 62 Meadow Lane. They are the direct neighbors of 40 Meadow Lane. I just want to thank you in advance for your patience at this late hour. I'm going to try to stay as focused and try to move this along as quickly as I can. I have with me tonight to assist in the presentation Lisa LaCory, who's a principal with Fine Arts and Sciences LLC. She is the former planning director of the town of East Hampton. Jacqueline Peranto, who is a professional engineer and the president of prime engineering in Farmingville, and Dr. Ronald Abrams, a certified environmental professional, and the principal scientist at Drew Associates. You do have the FEMA technical manual, so we're going to be referring to that in a little while. That's mostly going to be Jackie. But I just, by way of some background here, the appeal is brought pursuant to Village Law of the State of New York, 7-712A4, which authorizes this board to hear and determine appeals from any decision interpretation or determination made by an administrative official. In this case, it's the building inspector. The appeal is requesting that the board review the interpretation and the determination that was made by the building inspector in his September 19, 2014 letter to the Board of Architectural Review in connection with the 40 Meadow Lane application, and specifically with regard to his determination that the proposed residence at 40 Meadow Lane conformed to all of the villages, the village codes and applicable conditions. Specifically, there are three points I want to make with regard to that letter that we are challenging. The first is that he found that the height of the residence at 40 Meadow Lane is measured from the point of what he called FEMA plus 2, or in this case, 18 feet above sea level. The second is that the residence at 40 Meadow Lane does not exceed 2 and 1/2 stories, and then finally that the plans for 40 Meadow conform to the village code generally. We are also appealing the determination of the building inspector with regard to his subsequent issuance of the building permit. At the time we made the original appeal, the building permit, we were not aware the building permit was issued. We have since learned that the building permit was issued on September 26 of 2014, and that was based on the fact that the residents, you know, he claimed complied with the village's zoning code. We do not believe that that is the case. We also believe that it violates the village's flood damage prevention law and the FEMA regulations, and we'll go on to explain that through our experts. I do want to point out there was one other issue that came up today through our review of the file. It appears that the Suffolk County Department of Health Services permit that was approved and upon which the building permit was issued does not contain all of the information that was needed by the Health Department. And specifically, we found that the plan that was submitted to the Health Department for approval did not show any drainage, onsite drainage systems on the property. There were subsequent plans that were involved in the village's file that actually showed the septic and the drainage, but that was not disclosed to the Health Department, and that is significant because there are separation distances that are required between the septic system and the onsite drainage systems. And when you look at the plans, we've determined that they are severely deficient with regard to the separation. They do not meet the county health department requirements. We have brought this to the attention of the Health Department this afternoon, and they have begun an investigation, and they are working on that now. So I think that's very significant.
I'm sure you're aware, we don't have any jurisdiction over Health Department approvals or disapprovals or whatever, so.
But that, that's.
You're making us aware of that, but that's not saying anything.
Well, no, but I think it is important because the building inspector doesn't have the ability to issue a building permit without the Suffolk County Health Department's sign-off. And so if the sign-off was defective, there's no basis for the building inspector to have issued the permit because he's violating the village code.
We don't have jurisdiction to determine that the Health Department approval is invalid or insufficient or whatever, so.
Yeah, okay.
Try not to waste our time.
No, I'm not trying to, but I just, I'm just making the point.
It's very late, we're all tired.
I understand. I understand.
Why don't you focus on the issues that are within this period?
Okay, I think that is particularly relevant, but I'm going to move on. To demonstrate the errors that were made by the building inspector in his letter and in the subsequent issue of the building permit, my clients have retained the services of a number of experts who I'm going to call. There are three who are present today, one who could not be present, and I submitted an affidavit from him, a sworn affidavit. The first is the affidavit of Elliot Goldstein, who's a principal at Goldstein Partnership. He's an architect, licensed architect in the state of New York. His affidavit explains why the residence at 40 Meadow is actually a three-story residence in violation of the village code. Lisa LaCory will also explain, she's personally here, she will also explain why the residence is a three-story residence in violation of the village code. We will then call Jackie Peranto, professional engineer. She's going to explain why the plans upon which the building permit was issued violate the village's flood damage prevention law and the FEMA regulations. And then finally, Ron Abrams is going to explain why the fill and the retaining walls that were associated with this home at 40 Meadow not only violate the FEMA regulations, but he's going to demonstrate how the FEMA violations actually create the potential for serious injury and damage to both the subject property, but more importantly, from our perspective, from my client's property. And he's going to explain that. And that's the same damage, the very same damage that the FEMA regulations seek to The conclusions that are reached, that were reached by Dr. Abrams and Ms. Peranto with respect to FEMA violations are based not only on the village's own flood damage prevention law, which is the implementation of the FEMA regulations, but the FEMA technical bulletin number five, which I've handed out to all of you. And you'll. And you see that bulletin is called Free of Obstruction Requirements for Buildings Located in the Coastal High Hazard Areas, and it sets forth the minimum design criteria for new construction in these special flood zones. The property is located in the FEMA VE16 Zone, which is a designated coastal high hazard area. And by definition, a coastal high hazard area is defined in FEMA as an area of special flood hazard extending from the offshore of the inland limit of the primary frontal dune along an open coast and any other area subject to high velocity wave action from storms or seismic sources. If you look at that bulletin that I handed out, and I don't expect you to read it now, but you'll have it, you'll see that the placement of any construction element, including fill, below the base flood elevation in a coastal high hazard area is restricted because if that area is not free from obstruction, the potential effects of the buildings, on the buildings and adjacent buildings can be catastrophic. And that's stated in that technical manual. Moreover, the village's failure to properly administer and enforce its flood damage prevention laws is significant to the village because it jeopardizes the village's ability to participate in the national flood insurance program, and that provides favorable flood insurance rates to its residents. So there's other reasons why it's important for the village to have properly administered the FEMA laws. I'm going to deal now just with the issue of height before I turn it over to the experts on the other issues. And when I talk about height, I'm talking about dimensional height, not the two and a half stories. I'll leave that to Mrs. Laquory. If you look at the approved plans, they do not conform to Village Code Section 116-4D and Table 116C because the proposed dwelling actually exceeds the maximum allowable height under the zoning code. If you look at the village code, this is a table in this chapter of the village code. Chapter 116 Attachment C. It's a dimension, a table of dimensional regulations. It provides that the maximum dimensional height for buildings in the village's residential districts is 35 feet for structures with gabled roofs that are having a certain pitch. That's here, so you see, 35 feet later, it says two and a half stories. I'm going to leave that for Mrs. Laquory. Then you look in the village code, and it tells you the method by which height of a building is measured. And it's clearly set forth in Village Code Section 116 -2. Height of structure or building. And that reads the vertical distance measured from the average elevation of the finished grade along the side of the structure. So it's not any finished grade. It says, it's along the side of the structure fronting on the nearest street to the highest point of the highest roof. Then you look at Village Code Section 11612D. It talks about measurement from natural grade. And that's actually enacted under the title of height regulations, and it further defines how you measure height by stating that it must be measured from natural grade plus no more than a change of two feet vertically, with an exception that I'll get to later. So you see that here. The building inspector has ignored all of this. He has decided that, on his own, that, I don't care what the, I don't say, putting words in his mouth, but he's looking at the village code saying, I can apply the village code sections, they're pretty clear. In fact, they're extremely clear. He has decided on his own, unilaterally, to measure building height from FEMA plus two. It's pretty significant in this case because the FEMA regulations, as I mentioned, VE16 is 16 feet base flood elevation plus what they call two feet of freeboard. So the lowest structural element of the lowest finished floor has to be 18 feet. So basically, he's starting from 18 feet, and then he's going to measure 35 feet. That's a big, big difference, particularly since natural grade in this area is about six feet or eight feet. But he's claiming that he has the ability to interpret the manner in which to interpret height. But the law is clear that a building inspector's ability to exercise his discretion, and he does have discretion to interpret laws that are, that require interpretation, that may be vague or unclear. But he has no ability to interpret a law that's crystal clear. And I submit to you that these laws are crystal clear. This doesn't mention FEMA at all. And it's very easy to apply this. You may not get the house that the applicant wants because the top, the roof height is regulated by zoning and the base flood elevation in first floor regulated by FEMA, so it creates a squat house, but it can be built. But they can, so they can clearly be reconciled legally. The two work together. He claims that the height definitions are in conflict with one another, and that require an exercise of his discretion to reconcile the two sections. That is not the case. The two provisions, as I mentioned, are easily reconciled because the one section, 116-2, defines height from finished grade. Village Code Section 11612D1 allows an applicant to raise the natural grade of the property by adding fill, provided that he does not raise the average grade, I'm sorry, the grade by more than two feet vertically. And basically, what that section does is it defines permissible finished grade for calculating the height of a structure. Despite the clear and unambiguous directives of the village code, neither of which include any reference to FEMA, the building inspector concluded in his letter, which was relied on by the ARB and specifically referenced by the ARB in its decision when it approved 40 Meadow's application, that height is measured from FEMA plus two instead of the, from the grade of the parcel as the village code specifically says. It's important because FEMA plus two represents an elevation, again, as I mentioned to you, the lowest structural element of the lowest finished floor. It bears no relation to the overall height of the structure. In the VE zone, where this property is located, the base flood elevation is 16. So again, you have the lower structural element being 16 plus two or 18 feet, or more than 12 feet above the natural grade of the property, and more than 10 feet, more than the allowable finished grade of the property. Clearly in violation of the code. So the building inspector's interpretation to measure height of 40 Meadow from FEMA plus two and to issue the building permit based on the same results in a structure with a maximum dimensional height, in this situation, of 53 feet above natural grade, which is far in excess of the maximum height limitation of 35 feet set forth in the zoning regulations. Then the building inspector later went on, probably, I guess, recognized his mistake, and he's saying that, now he argues that there's a savings clause in 116-2D which says, "Except as permitted under the terms and conditions of a building permit." I have not seen anything specifically referenced in the building permit that says that this person was allowed to bring in more fill than two feet, even if he had that discretion. I don't believe he does. He also claims that this was a longstanding practice, and he ordinarily allows as much fill as needed to get to the FEMA first floor minimum height. But this violates the village code. It also violates FEMA. The building inspector's assertion of this unlimited discretion to raise the natural grade in excess of the two feet is not supported either by the village code or the basic rules of statutory construction, which dictate that an exception cannot be read to disavow the main provision. So really what he's doing here is he's reading the exception, and the exception then swallows the rule. And that's not what the rules of statutory construction require because it would render meaningless the explicit village code provisions that pertain to the measurement of building height. Also, the village code actually contains, if there's any question, the questions are actually resolved by both the village zoning code and the FEMA regulations. So even if he was right that there was a conflict, all you have to do is flip a few more pages, look at two different chapters, and it makes it crystal clear how it gets resolved. I don't think there is a conflict, but even if there was a conflict. Both of them expressly prohibit the building inspector from measuring a building's height using FEMA plus two, as he did in this case. The first section is, in the flood damage prevention law, Section 62-7, and it says, it's entitled, "Interpretation in Conflict with Other Laws." Section B specifically says, "The provisions of this chapter shall be held to be minimum requirements adopted for the promotion of the public health, safety, and welfare. Whenever the requirements of this chapter are at variance with the requirements of any other lawfully adopted rules, regulations, or ordinances, the more restrictive or that imposing the higher standards shall govern." Since the flood damage prevention requirements only regulate first floor elevations, not building height, and the village's zoning regulations only regulate building height and not first floor elevations, I don't think they're at variance anyway. But even if they were, the flood damage prevention law basically says that you apply the more restrictive provisions that will govern. With respect to height, if you measure height from the finished grade as opposed to the FEMA plus two, the more restrictive outcome is using the grade, not the FEMA plus two. So under the flood damage prevention laws, it's saying you apply the more restrictive, and that would be measuring from natural grade as the village code requires, the village zoning code requires. But then, even if that didn't explain it sufficiently enough, go to the zoning code. The zoning code has the opposite, says the same thing, but looks to the other laws and says, and specifically with respect to height, I would point out here. So I think it's particularly important here. It says that when this chapter, and this is 116-36D, and I'm just reading from a portion of it, says, "When this chapter imposes a greater restriction upon the height of buildings," that's exactly what we have here, right? "The provisions of this chapter shall control." So it's telling you when there's a conflict between Chapter 116 zoning and any other chapter, let's say Chapter 62, which is FEMA, it tells you which one controls, specifically for height. That was ignored by the building inspector. The building inspector also argues, and I'm just winding down on this, the building inspector also argues time and time again in trying to defend his position that, you know, what he has done is a longstanding practice of adding FEMA plus two to the height limits, and that essentially that this practice has obtained the force and effect of law. That's absurd. The fact that you do something wrong and you do it for a long time doesn't make it right. It's just something you've been doing wrong for a long time. So that's not, that's not an explanation. I would point out, it also does not cloak the practice with the force and effect of law, as he has said, because the doctrine of legislative equivalencies states that legislation, the section that tells you how you measure height, can only be repealed, modified, or superseded by another legislative act that's equal to the procedure that enacted it. So you can't have a law, which is the highest form of legislation, you can't have it modified by a resolution, and you clearly can't have it modified by somebody's interpretation or practice. That does not supersede the law. If the law is wrong, it needs to be changed. He cannot, on his own, unilaterally, make the determinations that he has made. Here, the building inspector has issued a building permit for a structure that violates the height provisions of the village code, and no height variance was obtained from this board. Therefore, the permit should be rendered annulity, and a stop work order should be issued immediately. So I have nothing further on the dimensional height. I'm now going to introduce Lisa Laquory, who's going to talk about a related height function, and that's with the two and a half stories versus three stories. And she'll demonstrate why this building is actually three stories in violation of the code. Thank you very much. Let me take this off. I don't think you need that.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Laquory, Fine Arts and Sciences. And I'll be brief also. So together with Eli Goldstein, the licensed architect, I reviewed and assessed whether the 40 Meadow Lane architectural drawings and plans comply with the maximum two and a half story code regulations. And they do not. The top story exceeds the limitations specified in the zoning code necessary to qualify as a story. So bear with me as I read the definition in the zoning code of a half story. "A story with at least two opposite exterior sides meeting a sloping roof, not more than two feet above the floor of such story, and having a ceiling height of at least seven and a half feet over not more than one half of the total floor area." Okay. So this needs a little bit of breaking down. So the first clause of that definition reads, "A story with at least two opposite exterior sides meeting a sloping roof." So here on this diagram is a top story. Let's picture there were two stories beneath it, so this could be a top story, and it would be totally conforming. But let me just explain why. So let's label what all of these sides are. Right here, this triangle in brown, we'll call side one. Here, this ridge below the blue, I'll call side two. Side three, in this perspective, we can't really see, but you could just imagine is going to be opposite number one. And the same with four. Okay? Four is opposite number two, and it would look similar. This would be a gable, ebel on both sides. Okay, so we've got four sides to this top story, and we've got the opposite sides, then, one and three, two and four. Okay? So now let's see which meet a sloping roof. We've got side two, this little brown area goes up here, that wall is here, and then it goes up and it meets this purple, which is the sloping roof.
You have a knee wall there.
Yeah. Okay. You've got this, number one, it goes up, meets a sloping roof. They all do. Okay, so all the walls go up and meet a sloping roof. And this in all ways, and all clauses of that definition meets the definition of a half story. But let's now go to the second clause, which is, so we've got opposite sides, four opposite sides, meeting at a sloping roof. Okay. Then it's not more than two feet above the floor of such story. And that's what you just mentioned, Mr. Chairman, that here you go up two feet before you hit that sloping roof. And you do the same on this side. Here, on side number one, you go up much more than two feet before you hit the sloping roof. Are you with me? You go all the way up to whatever that height is, maybe it's 14.
7.5.
7.5, okay. So that, these two opposite sides go up more than two feet before they hit the sloping roof, these two, two and four, do comply. They go up two feet, then they hit the sloping roof. Okay, so the definition, the code says, "You must have at least two opposite sides meeting a sloping roof at no more than two feet up." So you've got two opposite sides that do, two and four. One and three do not. But that meets the definition. Okay, so let's take a look.
Important what you said, no more than 7.5. So if that's no more than 7.5, it's a half story.
Okay, well, let's go in terms of the part about the roof, that the side can't meet the roof. The side has to be only two feet before you hit the roof. Okay? So here, this side is much more than two feet before you hit the roof.
7.5, which is just what you said.
No, I'm just talking about the first clause. "A story with at least two opposite exterior sides, not more than two feet above the floor of said story." Okay, so that is more than two feet above the floor. This is two feet, no more than two feet. Same over here, but one and three, that side, meet the roof.
It makes no sense whatsoever what you're saying.
Well, what would you call this? Is that a side, number one, what I'm referring to? That kind?
7.5 feet to the ridge. You read that yourself. 7.5 feet to the ridge.
Well, I'm not.
How can you have a knee wall on that side of the house? You can't.
Not saying that you do, but in order to meet the half-story definition, you have to have at least two opposite sides, not more than two. So you do in this one, you have two opposite sides, but only two opposite sides.
It only requires two opposite sides for it to be a half story.
Right. It meets it. You've got two.
It doesn't matter what the one and three are, as long as two and four or two feet up and meet a sloping roof.
And then the pitch can be whatever you want.
That's what I was trying to say, but she seems to be trying to say the opposite of that.
I'm sorry, that's perfectly what I'm trying to say, so I'm somehow missing.
You are missing me, yes.
Okay, okay. Okay, okay, so we've got two, this is a complying roof. Okay, so now let's look at the roof line for Forty Meadow Lane. It's not just a simple gable. It's a much more complex roof structure.
Can we number them?
We're going to, okay. But you, in a broad overview, you could say that it's two intersecting gables somewhat in a cross type of shape. It's a little bit more complicated than that, but that's what it would be. So let's call this same side that was number one over here, this is number one here, same dimension. Now, here, the exterior side of this building is right here, this dark brown area. This gable goes all the way, or just about all the way, to the edge of the building. So there are two stories beneath it that go right up to that part of the building.
I'm just trying to help it out. That's not the permitted roof line for our house.
Well, John, can we wait until?
Okay, but I just want to make sure that I'm going to object, what she's introducing into evidence is not.
And why are we looking at it?
Excuse me?
Why are we looking at it?
That's a really good question, because that's not the permitted roof line. Why don't we just look at the drawing that was submitted, not somebody else's?
You're saying that's not the roof line.
Why don't you look at the permit as opposed to her construct of what the roof line is, which is in error?
That's not the roof line, down at Forty Meadow Lane, you're saying.
That is not the roof line, absolutely not.
Mr. Chairman, it's a depiction of the roof line.
No, it's not.
For illustrative purposes.
It's wrong.
She's trying to make a point.
Look at the building permit.
She's trying to make.
Not her argumentative.
Okay, it's quarter to 11.
Can we see what the?
On a Thursday dice.
Show us the plans, show us the plans.
Let's see what the plans are.
Maybe, we're not going to get through all this case tonight. Maybe we should hold that until you can demonstrate it from the plan.
Mr. Peters, well, I wouldn't.
I mean, if that's not the plan, we're wasting our time.
Right.
Exactly.
It's a depiction.
Where?
We don't need a depiction, we need the real standard.
I understand it. Show me the building.
Well, the building plans, we have the building plans.
Well, I'm not sure he should be looking at. Don't put that thing up there, it doesn't make any sense.
You have the building plan? Show the building plan.
Thank you. We have the.
I thought it was quarter to 12.
I know.
Put it up right next to it, and then explain it that way.
I want to go to work.
It's not a roof line, that's an elevation.
And I have it in the large form, I have it.
We have the plans here.
Okay.
We have a section.
The architect will know which ones are the right ones, but we have them here.
It's your application.
Use the four and a half.
Okay. These drawings, these diagrams are based on the roof plan.
I'm going to object again. Why is she referring to these diagrams? Why isn't she referring to the building permit? That's what's before the board. This is the best evidence rule. Put the building plans down there. Talk about them.
Mr. Chairman, the rules of evidence in zoning board matters are very liberal. We're using the plans, we're explaining this pictorially, is all we're doing.
But explain it.
Okay, she's using the plan, she's using the plan now.
No, she's not, she's using that, are you kidding me, Anthony?
Where do you think we got that plan from?
That's not the plan.
Where do you think we got that from?
Well, you did it wrong, she drew it wrong, that's not the plan. I'll have the architect, it's not the plan, the architect's here, that's not the plan. Try again. Put the permitted permit down. That's what you're challenging? Don't create some construct out of your expert's mind, which is inaccurate. Put the plan down here.
It is accurate.
It is accurate. What, again, just keep on saying it's accurate? Put the plan down, and show me how it doesn't inform.
It's a depiction.
It's a dep-- that's nice, where's the plan? Plan your challenges.
May I go on with this diagram? That could be refuted afterwards, but let me just go forward with.
Go ahead.
Okay, so let's go.
Wait a minute.
All right, here's another depiction. All right, so this is the base.
I understand.
This way, okay? Then there's a gable that goes off of there, and then there's a gable on top of there.
May I interrupt for a second?
Yeah, please.
You're working off of exhibits that you're showing us. Are you going to be submitting these exhibits?
Certainly.
And are they marked in the form of something that, a month from now, when we look at them, we're going to know what they are?
Okay.
If not, I'm going to suggest, again, this is going to be a very long case, I mean, I can tell from my instincts, there are a lot of issues, I can just see from this, that are being raised tonight. Would it make more sense to have a better, clearer presentation that the board can understand, rather than having these vagaries over us? At 11 o'clock at night.
I hear you, and I listen, I do understand what you're saying. However, we have an applicant who's building and driving piles as quickly as he can, so by delaying this, clearly prejudice is our position. So it's very important to us that we at least finish the application tonight, and whatever the board does in making its decision, we would hope that they would make a quick decision. But, you know, this is effectively allowing him to continue working.
First of all, until we have submissions in a form that can be filed with the board and showing what they are, et cetera, et cetera.
This is part of what has already been submitted. Okay, so you have this, I'd like to go on.
We don't have anything from you.
This will be introduced.
What we have.
Mark it first, we'll mark it first.
What we have is Mr. Guardino's letter of appeal, and the things that were submitted tonight.
We can mark them now, just mark it as exhibit, whatever. I don't know what exhibit we're up to, but we're happy to mark it now.
Do you really want to go through?
I do, Mr. Peters, I apologize, but it's important.
It's up to the board, but the way things are going, we're going to be here for three hours tonight, have accomplished nothing, and have to come back and redo it all next month. If that's what you want to go through, tell us, and the board can decide, but it's.
If I can suggest the following, please. Mr. Guardino submitted, over two months ago, a page and a half letter, and now both this board and I am confronted with about this much material, which clearly I'm going to have to have the time to respond to, you haven't looked at. It makes much more sense for you to be able to digest this stuff.
Read what we've got.
This stuff was, at minimum, available days ago, didn't even have the courtesy of getting that stuff to you, filed the appeal based upon a page and a half paper, and now comes in with this raft of stuff, and expects you to digest all of this stuff.
Mr. Bennett, you handed me your response a minute before I walked in, so.
It's your case, yeah, because I anticipated some of the stuff you were going to say.
Let's cut through the chase here, we're not interested in hearing sides go back and forth like that.
I agree with you.
What we're interested in hearing is something that's going to make sense to us.
We are halfway through our.
And I don't know that this is making any sense to us. What is your argument, that this is not a true half-story?
That's where I'm getting to, and I wanted to use.
Because of those cheeks on each side of that, right? But if they ran those cheeks all the way down to the two-foot line, it would be legal, correct?
If it looked like this, if that came down.
Right. So, all right, so.
That's where you are, and when you do an overlay of them, so whether, you know, we believe we had a licensed architect, take the drawings, take the building plan drawings, and work them up into these diagrams, that's what he says.
So you're arguing that they should change their roof to comply?
Well, just saying.
Not to make it lower, just to change it to comply, that's what your argument is?
Well, it also would make it lower, it is not just.
It wouldn't make it lower, it would just fill in that cheek by bringing that roof line down to the other roof line.
That actually adds to volume, that adds to head area, that adds, you know, look at some of these plans here.
It's meeting the code.
Please stand up, you could go walk through in sliders, to go out through the building.
I know where you're going with your argument, I don't see it.
Okay, Lisa, you know what, why don't we just rest on this issue? Just point out this here, from this plan, we have an affidavit that was submitted that explains her point, and we'll just move on, that way we'll save some time, and we won't belabor this issue.
Okay, so here's the top story of the building. You have a master bedroom, elaborate stairwell, master closet, you also, on this wing, have a master sitting room, a large bathroom.
I don't care what's up there, I care about your argument that that roof line, it doesn't meet the half-story code.
Because that's, just as we explained, this area punctures, pops through the roof line, and the code says you really must stay at the entire length of the eve, no more than two feet above.
It doesn't say that.
You know what, we're going to rest on the affidavit that we submitted by Mr. Goldstein, and let's, if we can, ask Jackie Peranto to come up and address FEMA, which is a more significant issue, in my opinion.
Well, the height is the issue, right?
Well, I explained the dimensional height, this is a related function, the two-and-a-half stories, but, so I think I adequately addressed the height issue dimensionally, and now we want to talk about FEMA, if you don't mind.
Good evening, my name's Jaclyn Peranto, I'm the principal at Prime Engineering. As explained, the subject property is located in the VE zone, specifically the VE16 zone, which indicates that the lowest structural member of the bill, of the structure itself, must be at base flood elevation plus two, which puts it at elevation 18. The drawings reflect that the lowest structural member is at elevation 18. That's not our problem. The part that does not comply with the FEMA regulations is the use of fill and the use of the retaining walls that's shown and proposed around the structure. This is in clear violation of the FEMA code and the intent of the FEMA code, specifically for structures in a V-zone, which is indicated in the technical bulletin that was provided and is indicated in the title of it, "Free of Obstruction Requirements." The intent of the code is that there are no obstructions, that it allows for the free passage of water through and under the building. The FEMA code and the village code states that the space below the floor be free of obstruction, or if enclosed, the use of breakaway walls, screening, or wood lattice be used intended to collapse under wind and water loads, and without causing damage to the elevated building, as well as to allow for the free passage of water. The FEMA code clearly states that fill can only be used for drainage and landscape purposes in the V-zone, and it should not be more than two feet from the existing natural grade. So as we indicated, the existing natural grade is around elevation seven, the roadway is about seven and a half or eight, so that would allow the site to be filled to about elevation 10. The drawings are reflecting that it's being raised much higher. The village code, through its definition of height, restricts fill to not more than two feet, as Anthony had mentioned earlier. FEMA code also states that there should be a clear passage under the building for the free flow of water and waves, and that the fill must not divert the floodwaters or deflect waves such that increase damages sustained by adjacent or nearby buildings. The village code in Section 62-18A states that buildings should be elevated on piles so as to not impede the flow of water. The Forty Meadow plans depict the use of fill, which will divert the floodwaters onto the neighboring property. FEMA code further recommends a minimum of two feet of clear space. In looking at the existing grade elevations and adjacent neighboring grades, the maximum fill that should be permitted is to elevation 10, as indicated before, the road's at eight, plus two puts the grade at elevation 10. This would result in about eight feet of clear space below the lowest structural member. The subject building, Forty Meadow Lane, is designed with zero feet of clear space below the building. The building sections show that under the center of the house, there's clear space, however, it shows fill, bermed up on all four sides of the house. In the rear of the property, against the pool, the grade is being filled to elevation 13. In the front of the house, it is being filled to elevation 17, and along the east and west sides, retaining walls are proposed to raise the grade adjacent to the proposed house to elevation 19. The use of fill will have an adverse impact on the neighboring properties and create a life safety hazard in that the floodwaters will get diverted onto the neighboring properties. Further, these walls will create sheet flow onto the neighboring properties. The load and the force of the floodwaters and the waves could potentially cause damage to these retaining walls and create debris that would be washed up. Both the soil and the concrete debris could be conveyed onto the neighboring property and cause damage to the existing homes as well as to the subject structure. All four sides of the structure should be open, including the stairs should be open. Further, and just to point out, in the top illustration, you can see that this is the current height of the dune, they've lowered the grade and created basically a basin behind the home, where as the floodwaters come in and this basin gets filled up, it has nowhere to go but to the sides of the properties, which are currently at lower elevations. The existing homes have grade elevations at around nine and 11. They were built under the prior FEMA maps, where they were in an AE9 zone.
The water is coming in on those two sides too?
Excuse me?
If you're going to have a flood, the water's just not going to go on that property, it's going to go on all three properties.
It is, but it's going to be impacted further. It's impacted further by their property.
Okay.
Breakaway walls are, in front of the breakaway walls is bermed earth, so they're never getting to the breakaway walls. The drawings show breakaway walls, the sections can be deceiving in that you see clear space under here, but this is a section taken in the center of the pool. If you take a section at the back of the pool, as you see here, the earth is bermed up to the pool. Further, the elevation of the pool should be as high as the lowest structural member, so that the pool is not impacted and creates the debris. So the pool should be raised as well. That's also stated in the FEMA code. The FEMA Coastal Construction Manual, Chapter 10, discusses permitted foundation types. Table 10-1 clearly notes that the only permitted foundation is open and deep. The proposed plan does depict a deep pile design, however, it does not depict an open design. By placing the fill in the walls in front of the open structure, and more so in front of the breakaway walls, it is creating a foundation at grade, basically, which is not permitted in this zone. It renders the breakaway walls meaningless, because the solid wall will obstruct the free flow of water. The applicant also appeared to be creative in achieving the desired building height by raising the land around the surrounding building and interpreting the definition of the height to be measured from the newly created grade elevation. By doing so, they not only have raised the structure to a significant height, but they've created a safety hazard in berming the earth around the structure to create dams, in essence, for the water to not be able to flow under. These walls and fills will receive additional load during rain and storm events, as well as wave action, and run up against the existing dune. If walls are provided, they should have openings to allow for the free passage of water. The additional force can also have additional impact. As Anthony had mentioned earlier, and just to hit on it again, the FEMA Coastal Construction Manual, Chapter 5, specifically states that FEMA is prohibited to provide flood insurance to a community under the 1968 Act if a community does not adapt, adopt, and enforce the floodplain management regulations, which must meet or exceed the FEMA requirements. If the municipality is not complying with these design requirements, then the entire village runs the risk of losing the National Flood Insurance Program. I think it is important to note the health department situation that was mentioned earlier as well. There appears to be several different drawings, of which do not, they're not coordinated between the two. There's a drainage drawing that's done by Aris Design, and then there's a sanitary plan that was done by the surveyor. And these drawings depict different things, and the dates between them are months apart, so there's not coordination between the drawings themselves, which have created some discrepancies and some questions. Further, it doesn't appear that proper reports and information were provided to the village and requested by the village, requested that the applicant provide them, such as geotechnical reports or flooding impact studies. And with that, I will keep my message to that, so, thank you.
I'm going to call Dr. Ron Abrams to also address the consequences of the FEMA violation.
Well, I've reviewed the plans, and I take a more common sense approach to this whole thing. You can see on this aerial, somebody's trying to shove a really big square into a small hole, okay? A big building in a very narrow. A big building in a very narrow lot, and I'm sympathetic that it was a non-conforming, pre-existing lot, but it's in a VE zone. It's going to eventually, if not in the short term, cause major troubles for themselves and their neighbors. The VE zone is, it represents, by FEMA, an aggressive revision to the maps, because we learned so much from Sandy. These properties now sit in an active wave zone, according to FEMA. They can be flooded, they can be under the ocean in a set of circumstances, which we've seen and which are possible. It's a coastal high hazard area, as defined in your code, and FEMA is taking everybody to the next step in coastal protection, okay? It's estimated that the fill for the proposed structure and retaining walls on the property will rise six to eight feet in the first stage and be stacked twice. Two six-foot stages. And it doesn't really show what's happening to the neighbor, but at 20 Meadow Lane, you have maybe four or five feet, and you come to a six-foot retaining wall. And on the other side, you come, again, within just a few feet, and the land goes up. That's not depicted very well in any of the material, and I've looked at hundreds of pages in the last few days. You're going to have a situation with a tall monolith and narrow lot with steep sides, and you're going to create two channels. They almost look, when we do a little sketch, like urban alleys. And you're going to get drainage that overflows from these walls. These walls have weep holes in them. They're intending to send the water sideways towards the neighbors' lots. The retaining wall at 20 Meadow is going to get undermined. It's a timber retaining wall, and it's going to be facing two concrete gravel structures. And it doesn't have a chance. And once that retaining wall goes, the garden that it supports goes. So the yard of 20 Meadow Lane is doomed. Sorry. That's what the design shows. Yes, I know that there is a code about how much drainage is meant to be taken care of, but we've been living with these codes for how long? And they didn't work. All over our region, they didn't work. Some municipalities are going to five- and eight-inch retention. Maybe that's overkill, but, and maybe FEMA is now trying to protect us more than we ultimately need, but just imagine the scenario, which we've seen on Long Island and we know. Last winter's snowpack was impressive, right? Imagine two or three feet of snow sitting on this property, on the tops of these walls, on the top of the house. Then comes late January, we get our usual Long Island warm week, and then we get heavy rains, and all of that water is going into these two gullies and sitting on the ground. We're only four feet from groundwater. And because we're subject to the pressure from the ocean, that four feet could be two or three feet at any given time. So we've got totally saturated sands, we've got excess water above us, and we get a storm. All of the soil and both of the neighbors' yards are going to be washed and damaged. Now, if perhaps we survive this saturation over time, what we're going to have is two alleyways that stay saturated. And maybe the flood damage, I'm predicting, hasn't happened, but we're going to have two areas that stay saturated all the time. You're going to get mold, you're going to get mosquitoes, you're going to get infiltration of water over time, pumping action from the tidal pressure on the groundwater, and these soils will not take that treatment. And there's no, they don't show any kind of relief along the edge of the lot. What they've shown is pipes running to an enormous CULTEX system in the front yard. Once that system is full, and the groundwater and soils are full, you've got yourself a steep bowl that's full of water. In fact, if you take a look at the way this building is designed, it's like putting a box in a hole with slopes all around it and hoping to keep the water out by making the walls, oh, impervious, except they will let the water drain out to the neighbors. It's just a bad plan. The area between the existing dune and this fill bank, under which they put a CULTEX system, you know, like Jackie said, this low bowl is going to just collect water. It's going to stay wet all the time. And they can plant it up. I build and create wetlands all the time. Maybe they'll get a nice wetland at the bottom. But this is fill in a flood zone, and it's at a almost 50% incline. FEMA says no more than 5% inclines in flood zones. This is an active flood zone. So I've described to you, water movement and energy is coming from below, coming from the sides. We get the big storm washes over this dune, takes the whole dune out. This is a disaster waiting to happen. And then they'll come back to you and ask for yet more variances to fix the problems that they're living with. And the house will be built. And what are you going to do? Say no, take the house down? It was a mistake in the first place? Be too late to do anything about that. FEMA is trying to protect us nationally. Yes, there's a lot of challenges, and it's somewhat confusing, but this one is the most egregious violation I've ever seen of those principles. And at a time when we're all trying to get hold of what happened a few years ago and not let it happen again. And quite frankly, I think you're going to let it happen again if this moves forward.
Thank you, Dr. Abrams. I'm just going to make two very, very quick points, and then we're done with our presentation. I think you're going to hear tonight from the other side that my clients, both the Deans and Ms. Hackett, have benefited by the same quote-unquote "pattern of practice" that was employed by the building inspector here, the FEMA plus-two. As Jackie pointed out earlier, the property at the time that Dean and Hackett House were built, it was not a VE-16 zone. In fact, it was an AE9 zone, so it was very different. That's significant, because the grade of the property, of those two properties, were between six and eight feet. If you're allowed to, that's the natural grade. If you're allowed to alter the natural grade by two feet per the code, it gets you up either to eight feet or to 10 feet. Then if you're at AE9, you only have to build to the nine. You didn't have the two feet of free board back then. So the effect was that you actually have the Hackett's house being built one foot lower, it's actually one foot lower. So even if you decided to, FEMA plus-two, it didn't matter then, is my point. It was one foot lower than it could be. And the Dean House was calculated, actually, at 11 inches over. My point is that, what you'll hear about this pattern of practice, I submit to you, there is no pattern of practice of approving houses that are more than 10 feet taller than the code allows on the zoning. And then the final thing is, I know Mr. Bennett had mentioned about the plans and submitting things. I think the village attorney knows that from the village, state village law, when you have an appeal like this, different than a variance application, that the building inspector is supposed to transmit to you the full record of everything he used to make his determinations. So that's both for the September 19 letter and the building permit, which means all of the plans are the responsibility of the building inspector to get them to this board to review. So to the extent that I'm not submitting every plan, because frankly, I don't think I have every plan, because we've been stonewalled a little bit through foil. We have some plans, we don't have them all, but you should have them all, because the building inspector has a legal obligation to have delivered them to you and for you to decide this appeal. So the record should be complete with all of the plans, and I have nothing further. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Before you go on, Jake, did you get copies of those affidavits having to do with FEMA?
No.
Do we have extras?
Yeah, we have some here.
You want the manual?
I need probably exactly one, too. I don't see one of those in here. Everything else is in here.
You have a full package?
Except for this. All right, now you got this, too. Here's another one.
Keep them coming.
Get back to me later on.
You have the affidavits. Kevin To.
Make sure you got them all.
Yes.
If you don't, I'm happy to submit them.
The other one, Goldstein, is architecture, but...
I've got three of them.
And then this paper.
Do you have anything to say, John, or...
Yes, I do. I know it's late, so I'm going to start by asking the board to adjourn this matter. I haven't had the opportunity to look at these voluminous submissions. I don't know why the applicant waited until the night of the meeting, if he's so concerned about timing, to submit these. So I would respectfully request the board for an adjournment. I do want to, you're going to be thinking about this over the next month, so I do want to very quickly give you some, a couple pivotal things to think about, and maybe some skeletal, and I do mean skeletal. I don't want to even get near my record of being here at 4:00 in the morning, at one time about 15 years ago, so. In any event...
It was 3:45, right?
Excuse me?
I think it was 3:45.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was 3:45.
We were all younger in those days.
We were younger. One of the things that I've been shocked at in this whole proceedings from, you know, because this application was at the Architectural Review Board, was at the Zoning Board of Appeals, and then it's been back to the Architectural Review Board. It's been in court where Judge Santorelli, as I'm sure you know, denied an application for preliminary injunction when these very arguments were presented to him. And I think that's important, because it's not just, John Foster's been criticized a lot here this evening, and I think his, you'll agree with me in the end, that his methodology is not only respectful of the various codes, but also respectful of the property owner's rights on either side. And it's not just John Foster that told you that, it's Judge Santorelli in his denial of a request for an application for a preliminary injunction, in which he quoted at length and favorably from John Foster's affidavit explaining the reasons why not only the absolute height of the, he approved the house not only based upon the absolute height of the house, but also the two-and-a-half-story issue, as well as the gable roof issue. And we will have the architect give just a very brief explanation of why these, this house meets those code sections, using the very diagrams that he used when he met with Mr. Foster, and which were submitted with the, before the Architectural Review Board to demonstrate the compliance of the house. But one of the things that I've been literally blown away with in this whole sort of tortured history of this application, which has been opposed by numerous people, particularly the neighbors on either side, is the breathtaking hypocrisy that has gone on in here. And you can hear it not only in the affidavits that the neighbors have submitted, but now you hear it from the experts' own mouths. One of the experts said tonight, for example, that, oh, you can only bring two feet of fill in when you're in a flood zone. And one of the things that we, which is just, there's nothing in the code that says that whatsoever. It's a figment of someone's imagination. One of the things I want you to look at when you're reviewing these submissions are the, in Mr. Foster's affidavit, he very helpfully and handily gives you the, some of the plans that were, upon which he approved the Dean and Hackett Houses. And I will tell you, as Mr. Foster states, that those Dean and Hackett Houses were based upon taking the starting off point of the, for the height of the house from base floodplain. Not from natural grade, but from base floodplain, because what the Village Code says is that you take the height from finished grade. And then there's another section that says, it starts out, it says, it says, height, I'm trying to read it from, I'm trying to get it from my mind, so I'm late, but in any event, it says the height is measured from the actual, from the finished grade along the front of the, along the front of the house. Then there's a section that limits how much fill can be brought into the property, but it says quite critically, it says, except under the terms and conditions of a building permit. So Mr. Foster's always stated, has been done for 30 years, that what he does is he takes the limit of fill as base floodplain, base floodplain, base floodplain elevation plus two, that's, won't let you bring in any more fill of that, and that's where he takes the jumping off point, the finished grade. Mr. Foster says he's taken, he's issued permits for approximately 60 homes in the flood zones over his years, that the practice predates his tenure as a building inspector. And interestingly, and this is one of the things that Judge Santorelli caught on, that's the methodology, the very same methodology that he used for allowing, for issuing the building permits on the Dean and Hackett House. So that's in the papers, and we'll flesh it out at the next meeting, which hopefully you'll adjourn, so we can all try to respond to all the stuff. But remember what was said, it struck me as just another, just another touchstone for the hypocrisy, the jaw-dropping hypocrisy that Dean and Hackett have shown here, is that you can only bring in two feet of fill, you can only raise the grade by two feet of fill. One of the things that's annexed to John's affidavit is the certain of the building plans and the surveys for the Dean House. I think the Deans are here. In any event, there are two surveys that are shown there. One is the survey, the pre-construction survey, which shows the natural grade, which varies between five and six feet. And then, and then you have the proposed grade on the Dean and Hackett House. Now remember that all this fear about, oh, you're going to bring in all this fill, it's going to ruin my house. I guess that Mr. and Mrs. Dean didn't give a hoot in hell about the next-door neighbor if they were so concerned, because they brought in, the grades at the front of the house was between five and six, and the finished grade, which is this survey, which is based upon some, based upon, I believe, some Ed Hollander planting plans, is 15. So this big fear about bringing in fill and how that's an evil thing to do, I guess, I guess the Deans didn't care about that, because they brought in between nine and 10 feet of fill. Go buy that house, because I remember, it's so interesting, because the members of the Meadow Club were outraged when that Dean House first went up, because, oh my God, it's towering. It has terraced retaining walls. There's 10 feet of fill there. So where is the concern, where is the concern about limitation of fill when the Dean House itself, as does the Hackett House itself, and by the way, the grade on these houses, artificially created, goes all the way to the top of the homes? So I find it, the height of temerity for Dean and Hackett to come in and who have benefited from Foster's and his predecessor's interpretation of where you're measuring the jumping off point for height, i.e. base floodplain, base floodplain plus-two, and who have also benefited from the ability to bring in fill, to come in here and challenge this interpretation. I would assume, I would assume that if they're truly serious about how, about their offered interpretation, that they would willingly agree to allow you to direct the building inspector to rescind the certificate of occupancies on their homes. And I mean that. Think about it. They have said that you have to take the height measurement from natural grade, but that's not the way their houses were built, either one of them. They have said you can't bring in fill over a certain amount, but that's exactly what they've done. So if you trust what they say, as opposed to what Mr. Foster has said, and what the Supreme Court smiled on, cited approvingly in their refusal to grant Dean and Hackett a preliminary injunction, if they want to be true, they should voluntarily agree to have the certificates of occupancy on their homes rescinded.
Okay.
Okay? Number one. Let's come up...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Can I have an extra one of these? Do you have one?
Leave, I do.
Thank you.
I'm saying the page 22 is the relevant.
I want to file, and I don't want to take home with me. If you don't, Thanksgiving.
Sure. But not only, not only did the, not only did the court adopt Mr. Foster's view, but I will suggest to you, the court also took very interest, took very interesting notice in the fact that the village, in adopting the moratorium, in effect legislatively approved the existing interpretation of Mr. Foster, because as the courts, as the court said, if it was an incorrect interpretation of the existing law, they would have merely directed Mr. Foster to rescind... Mr. Foster to rescind the building permit, but they didn't. Because the village, when they adopted the moratorium, said that they were concerned that the current law had some, wasn't adequate in terms of some, some, some height issues that had arisen as a result of some planning board studies. But that's in effect a legislative finding that Mr. Foster's interpretation and his predecessor's interpretation is the law. It has been given, it has been given, it is the law in the village. Josh, can you come up?
John, I thought you were gonna ask us to adjourn this so you could present this next month.
Okay, if that's what you wanna do.
Well, that's what you started out by saying.
I'd like to adjust to that if I could again.
Well, he's not finished yet.
The board makes its own decision, but I just walk my objection.
Well, he's not finished yet, so he's gonna finish next month.
When you filed your appeal, you did not raise any issues about FEMA.
I'm sure I did.
No, you raised in one sentence.
Not when you filed the appeal.
But I, we filed an amendment.
You subsequently submitted a letter indicating that you were going to raise some issues about FEMA, but that letter didn't set forth what those issues are. In terms of your interpretation and half-story argument, we're aware of what that is from what you filed. In terms of the FEMA issues that you're raising, we're hearing this for the first time tonight, and we're gonna need time to look at it. We're gonna need time for our consulting firm to look at it. And Mr. Bennett has asked for an opportunity for him to look at it. You can't say that that's an unreasonable request.
I, well, I can state it. The board obviously will do whatever it feels is right.
And also, I'm sure there's some people out in the audience who may wanna be heard. I would ask them to save that to next month. This will be here next month, unless it gets withdrawn, which I doubt. I think we'll just adjourn this for all purposes and reconvene with this on the 18th of December.
All right. Mr. Chairman, can I just respectfully request an opportunity to rebut, because, you know, a little respect.
Well, you have your notes there. If you rebut, then he's gonna re-rebut.
Well, but the problem is, Mr. Chairman, is that we rushed through our presentation because we thought we were gonna get through it tonight. We thought that we would hear it now that we've rushed through the presentation.
Hardly call your presentation a rush.
Well, but Mr. Bennett now will have a month to prepare.
You can make a further presentation next month, too. They're hearing you.
That's what I'm saying. That's all I'm asking. That's all I'm asking.
Next month, sure. Oh, absolutely.
Oh, yeah, we're adjourning it for all purposes.
That's all, that's all I'm asking. That's all I'm asking. That's fine.
Can I have a motion adjourned for all purposes?
I'll move.
Second. Your favor?
Aye.
This meeting of the Southampton Village Board of Zoning Appeals is adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.